Township Zoning Board of Adjustment, Monday, November 24th, 2025, regular meeting. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Public Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 2nd, 2025, a copy of said notice was emailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. Second, on January 2nd, 2025, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on January 2nd, 2025, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and for your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Barillo is excused. Mr. Kanter?
Here.
Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Orozco? I guess he's running late. Mr. Ryan?
Present.
Ms. Scottson is excused. Mr. Cabaracus?
Here.
And Chairman Mertens?
I am here. And can I ask everybody to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lisa, put on record, Mr. Orozco is here, so we do have seven members.
You have a form.
Form. Well, we had one.
Sorry.
Okay, Andy, can you swear in the professionals, please?
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your names for the record.
Charles Cunliffe.
Christine Bell.
Your professionals are sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Andy. Approval minutes, do we have any minutes?
There are no minutes.
Okay. Correspondents?
There's one thing, an email was sent to all the members with a draft copy of the meeting dates for 2026. Does anyone have any comments?
Yeah, does any board members have any comments on the dates?
Everything looks good to me, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, the only thing is, she said to mention that the only two dates that are different from the second or fourth Monday are May 18th and October 5th, and that's because of the holidays.
Okay.
And our September looks good with Russia shot on, like, I guess so, yeah.
Okay, we have seven members, so do we need to vote on that tonight?
No.
No. We'll hold off on that.
I would just recommend, you know, just review it all and then we can.
Okay, we're gonna review it and then maybe.
You get any comments, we could do it.
So that way our other members can review it before we vote on it. Sounds good. And that's the, that's it with the correspondence?
Yes, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, resolutions before the board tonight, case number BA 21-28, Freehold Welding and Corporate. Resolution granting additional one-year extension of time on approval granted 9/11/2023. Eligible voters: Barillo, Kanter, O'Donnell, Orozco, Ryan, Scottson, and Mertens. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Ryan.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Donnell. Roll call.
Mr. Kanter?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Chairman Mertens?
Yes.
Resolution memorialized.
Case number BA 24-18, CEV Holdings LLC. Resolution granting use variance, C variance, and preliminary and final site plan approval. Eligible voters: Kanter, Hughes, O'Donnell, Orozco, Ryan, Scottson, and Mertens. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell.
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Ryan. Roll call.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just refresh my memory which one this was. Mr. Barr?
BEV Holdings?
Yeah.
This is Lenic Auto Body at Maxim and.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Good question. I wish I could have answered.
Should have before running. Roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Kanter?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Chairman Mertens?
Yes.
Resolution memorialized.
Okay. Case number BA 2420, Julie Rich LLC. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion from the board that we hold off on voting on this resolution tonight.
It would be a motion to table, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
To the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to table it, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Hughes has made a motion to table it.
I will second that.
Second by Mr. Ryan.
Is that right that I did that?
Roll call.
Do a roll call on the motion.
Just do a roll call. Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Yeah, we're just gonna wait on that.
It's a motion to put it off to the next meeting.
I made a motion. Oh, if I should. Andy, I'm not on the list and I made the motion, is that okay?
What did you, did you certify watching it?
I did watch it, yes. And I did read it. But, wanna re-motion that?
Why don't we re-motion?
To be safe, I would, yeah.
Yeah.
I would.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to table this resolution.
Mr. Ryan has made a motion to table. Do I have a second?
Only Mr. Orozco can.
Mr. Orozco, right.
Okay, Mr. Orozco is tabled, okay. We have a roll call.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Chairman Mertens?
Yes.
Memorial. It's tabled to the next.
Okay, this motion will be, we will readdress it at the next meeting. And that is, Lisa, what's that date, the 8th?
The next meeting is December 8th.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, the other matter tonight, we are going to just switch the orders. We do have a bulk variance C. The third one on the list tonight, this should not be a very long application, so it is our, my right to change the order. I advise the professionals and I've also advised the attorneys, we will take, we will move GM Church to the first on the list tonight, so I'm gonna read that into record right now. This is for case number BA 25-15, JM Church. Type of bulk variance, description, application to JM Church LLC as applicant and owner seeking approval to demolish an existing one-and-a-half-story dwelling and construct a two-story family dwelling on an undersized lot along with a new septic system, portable well, dry well, asphalt driveway, and other kilnry improvements on premise known as Block 165.02, Lot 15.01, 43 Vanderweer Road. Exploration is February 19th, 2026. Good evening, Mr. Pape.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, board professionals and public. Kenneth Papel, on behalf of your applicant, JM Church LLC, this is, as you've read into the record, a request for property owner seeking bulk variance relief. There is on the property a single-family residence which the property owner wishes to remove and to construct a new single-family residence with considerable additional improvements for the benefit of the municipality. Before we make a substantive presentation, could I ask if the record could reflect that our notices were received and the board has jurisdiction?
Yes, Mr. Pape, the board has jurisdiction.
Thank you. The presentation this evening will be by Eric Halpert. Mr. Halpert is a professional engineer and a professional planner. It is my intention to have him first present the physical aspects of the plan as the engineer, and then there's some addition, there's a minor additional testimony with regard to planning testimony. If we could have Mr. Halpert sworn or affirm?
Are we being sworn in now?
Please. Please.
Do you affirm the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state, please state your name for the record and spill your last.
Eric Halpert, H-A-L-P-E-R-T. Licensed professional engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey. I received my bachelor's in science and civil engineering from NJIT. I have appeared before multiple boards, including this board, and these plans were prepared under my supervision.
We accept your qualifications. But, may I just one last question, Mr. Chair? Please confirm that your licenses are in good standing on this date.
They are.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pape.
Mr. Halpert, if you could, I indicate to the board the exhibits that you intend to rely upon. Mr. Aguirre is here to assist in presenting them electronically. If you could just identify what exhibits you would like to work with and where should we begin?
I will be utilizing the submitted plan sets with the existing conditions and the proposed conditions, as well as an aerial exhibit that was submitted to the board. And if you can please pull up the aerial exhibit dated 11/21/25, I could go through the surrounding area.
Thank you.
The board is looking at an aerial exhibit of the property located along Vanderweer Road on the western side of the road. It is a two-lane highway with a posted speed limit of 35 miles per hour, and it is surrounded by single-family dwellings on the same side of the roadway. If you can please bring up the plan set dated 10/22/25, the existing conditions sheet. And that would be sheet two of this set.
Thank you.
Could you zoom?
Can you zoom?
Two.
Not sheet two, Rich.
Sheet two. Thank you.
Perfect.
The existing conditions sheet depicts the property as presently improved with a single-family dwelling, one-and-a-half stories. It is serviced by a septic system. It is serviced as well by public water presently. There is an improved driveway on the north side of the property. There is a shed, and the present setbacks are 13, the present setbacks to the front yard is 13.90 feet, to the rear yard presently is eight feet, as depicted on the existing conditions survey.
As we go to the next plan, this is the structure that our client proposes to remove?
Yes.
And this is the structure our client is proposing to construct?
Correct. The proposed conditions sheet is depicting the redevelopment of the property. The existing house will be demolished. A new house is going to be built with a driveway. The driveway will measure 20 feet wide in essentially the same spot the existing driveway exists. The footprint of the proposed dwelling is approximately 1,650 square feet, where the current dwelling is approximately 1,100 square feet footprint. A new septic system is proposed, conforming to the Board of Health requirements, and the applicant will be required to obtain the approval from the Board of Health and the NJDEP requirements. The applicant as well is proposing to install sidewalk along the frontage. There currently is no sidewalk, and the applicant will comply with a comment to connect the proposed sidewalk to the existing sidewalk, which is approximately 15 feet to the north and continues around Seton Hall Drive. The applicant as well is proposing a right-of-way dedication for future roadway widening by Township of Howell. This will result in a smaller lot area, but only due to the fact that the applicant is dedicating a right-of-way, an 8.5 foot width right-of-way.
Mr. Halpert, just excuse me, how much sidewalk is the applicant gonna install?
The applicant is going to install along the entire frontage of 153 feet.
153 feet?
Linear feet plus the extension to the existing sidewalk, which is approximately 15 feet to the north.
Charlie?
Yeah, so if you were to look at this from the road or on like Google Street View, you could see there's a utility pole like 10 or 15 feet just to the north of the common property line with the north, the lot to the north. The sidewalk, when that subdivision was done, doesn't come all the way to the property line, so they're just proposing to carry it another 15 feet more than what they have currently shown on the plan. So John, if you can just go to the north here on Street View, you can see that's where the sidewalk ends. So the property line is actually like where the chevrons, the little yellow arrow chevrons, that's probably where the property line is, so they're just gonna run it all the way and tie into that sidewalk on Seton Hall. My comment, we had, they do need a waiver from providing curb. I mean, being that we have curb and sidewalk there, my recommendation would be that the board, if you're inclined to act favorably, let's require the curb to continue the streetscape through there, so it's one nice clean frontage, continuation of the residential. Mr. Pape, is that something the applicant has an issue with?
It's a substantial expense that we were hoping to avoid, but if it's something that's important to you and to the town, the answer is yes.
Okay. And, Mr. Chair, Ken, do you mind if I just jump in and ask some pointed questions?
Nope.
So, so they're here because the lot is undersized, one, because it has a septic system. Lots not serviced by public sewer in town or required to have a minimum of one acre. When a lot is proposed to be serviced by septic system, we also look at the sewer mapping, the sewer service area, to see where the closest sewer infrastructure is. There is a manhole at the corner of Seton Hall and Vanderweer Road. That's 150 feet north of the property. Our code doesn't require presidential, single-lot property owners to connect to public sewer unless that sewer is within 100 feet of the property frontage, so they're not required to connect. So, to make them connect public sewer to service one lot would be a significant expenditure, so I don't see that as something that is being required. The lot is unique. It's elongated with like front, you know, significant frontage on Vanderweer Road to where the existing house is situated. It kinda runs 90, you know, perpendicular to the length of the lot, so you can see how close it is to the public right-of-way here. By knocking down the structure, they're shifting it to actually make it run lengthwise with the lot frontage. So while they do still need technical relief for the lot area, for the frontage, and I think for the one side yard setback, they're actually improving upon the existing condition by turning that structure. It's just a particular narrowness of that lot from a depth perspective that, you know, to build something completely conforming, you'd be like left with like a railroad house on this property, which would have a certain aesthetic that is not necessarily appealing. They are proposing a new septic system that complies with the Board of Health. They're gonna have to get that approval as a condition of any board approval. The, have you done soil borings, Mr. Halpert, on that?
We have done soil borings.
What's this water table look like?
The water table was greater than 10 feet.
Okay. All right, so by that?
By Mr. Roberto.
Okay. So by that representation, there should not be any concern for the septic system needing to be mounted if the septic, if the water table's 10 feet or lower, so we can cross that off the box. They are also moving that into the property. The existing septic system, the concrete chamber, is like very close to the right-of-way, so that in itself is also an improvement with this, with this application. They are proposing dry wells. All the roof leaders are gonna be channelized into a dry well size for the water quality storm, so that's a positive. As far as the dwelling, is there any intent to put bedrooms in the basement?
There is no intent. The architect plans to pick no bedrooms in the basement.
Okay. And then, there wasn't any like attic plans, but there's no intent to make a habitol attic or bedrooms in the attic?
No.
Okay.
That's correct. That's correct.
So it's a four-bedroom dwelling, you've got a one-car garage attached to the structure, and then you've got a 20-foot wide by at least 20-foot deep driveway, so that's enough to satisfy three cars? So complies with RSIS?
Yes.
Okay. See if I just had a couple more comments. So they are, so they do need the relief because they're making the lot area even smaller. I would just acknowledge that they are providing right-of-way dedication that's required in accordance with the master plan. Vanderweer Road here is only 33 foot wide. They're proposing to dedicate another eight-and-a-half feet to get us to 50, 50 feet. We could require it in an easement, and they would, you know, still need the relief, but it wouldn't be making it worse. To me, right-of-way dedication is preferable to an easement here, and I don't know that it necessarily changes the characteristic of, of what's being presented to the board, so that would, I think, be the preference. And I think the, if the board's inclined to require curb, I think that would be a positive as well. See if I had anything else here. We talked about the septic. So you said it's on public water right now?
We confirmed.
And it's gonna be reconnected?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that's positive, too. Let's see if it's on. We talked about the right-of-way, we talked about the roof leaders. As a condition of the approval, if there's any tree clearing required, you'll get a tree clearing permit. You're also gonna have to get us freehold soils because you're over 5,000 square feet. And then as far as accessory structures and generators, obviously this is an undersized lot. At time of future plot plan, you know, you just make sure that that's shown, and you're gonna be subject to all the codes that are applicable to those infrastructure. Other than that, that's all I really have. I'll let Christine chime in if she has any planning questions.
I don't have any additional questions.
If I may, I very much appreciate the thoroughness that Charlie just placed before you, essentially usurped Mr. Halpert's testimony. Only item that was not pointed out that we wanted to make certain was pointed out, in addition to the stormwater management and the dedication and the sidewalk, there's also street trees where there currently are in street trees that are shown on this plan. Quite candidly, unless the board has further questions of Mr. Halpert, I'm very comfortable resting on the presentation that Mr. Cunliffe has just made to you in support of the relief that's being requested.
Okay. We have two things, we have, well, we gotta go to public, but before we go to public, I think among us, we need to discuss the curb line with the sidewalk, so I wanna just get a feel for everybody before we... Mr. Ryan?
Can we maybe take a look at that street view again? I know to the south, there's a sidewalk. And yeah, is there a curb? That's, yes. So if you continue to the south, Charlie? Are you controlling it, Charlie, or, oh, I'm sorry?
John. Sorry.
Yeah, keep going to the south. There's, you're gonna hit a sidewalk at some point. It's further down than I thought. There it is. All right, it's much further down, but I believe it's, yeah, he kept going. Yeah, there's a curb there. So it's kinda just ends right at that light there.
We would rather do a contribution, right?
Yeah, so that's just guesstimating at probably like 1,000 feet, maybe, give or take, from the south of this property line. There's nothing in our ordinance, especially for an undersized lot that requires them to run off-tract improvements for such a development. I think what they're offering, what we're discussing, is sidewalk and curbing along the subject frontage, which is still pretty lengthy. To me, I think the curbing is good, because when you don't have curbing, even if you have sidewalk, it creates the possibility for people to pull onto areas that aren't meant to be parked, and having curbing there certainly makes that more difficult, you know what I mean? And you have a clear defined driveway curb cut and a driveway width, you know, people aren't just pulling head-on off of Vanderweer Road, and, you know, we always ask about how, you know, extra bedrooms and things like that. The curbing, I think, would be another, checks and balance on that, on that aspect.
Everybody concur with our engineer?
I did.
Yeah. Yeah.
Chairman, I'd like to just say something. In regard to the curbing, I agree with the curbing, but what I'd like to see, from what I've just seen, that everybody has to put curbing in there. Not a pick and choose, like he needs a hito, because it should connect all the way up in that particular area. Not that I'm in favor of curbing, but I don't wanna see anybody come in and say we don't need it and not get it, being he's getting it, and he has to pay for it. So I just wanna make a record of that. If any other cases come through, that, that's our policy.
Yes, 'cause I, Mr., Charlie did bring up, and I totally agree, I do not like to see a sidewalk without a curb. I mean, I know it's an extra expense, but, I mean, it doesn't really serve a purpose having a sidewalk if you don't have that curbing, so I think, I think we're all in cons-
It's dangerous for somebody walking.
Yeah, exactly. Also, John, maybe you can help me out with this one. They're testifying, there's not gonna be any living areas downstairs. Is that something with the current issue that we've been having? Should that be, maybe?
Mr. Chair, bedrooms. No, no bedrooms.
No bedrooms.
Correct.
Yeah.
Someone may have recreation in the basement.
Yeah, no, that's fine. What I'm just saying is, is that something that we should be inspecting once a year just to make sure that they're complying? I'm not saying they're not going to, but we are, the town has been having a lot of issues with a lot of people.
I would say that, that's more on a case-by-case basis. I mean, given the location of where they're proposing the, the home, the additional occupants, you know, you're now taking into account more motor vehicles possibly coming in, in and out of this property, and I would say, maybe in this case, as a condition of approval, that you request that no additional bedrooms be placed, just because of its location and the size of the lot, not necessarily as a blanket.
John, haven't, haven't we put those in other resolutions?
We have done single-family.
Yes.
Yeah, we have.
So we're all good with doing that, having then?
Yeah, and the resolution gets recorded by deed. I don't think we're suggesting a deed restriction on, you know, basements, but the resolution has that representation, and that gets recorded with the property in perpetuity.
Okay.
Actually, I asked Mr. Pape if there's anything about trees?
There's street trees that are shown on the plan that would be planted by-
Yeah, the big circles?
Ordinance, ordinance, or, ordinance street trees.
They're gonna plant them?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
That's good to hear.
Yeah, me too.
And, yeah, yes, Mr. Kanter.
For the, for the professionals, is the spacing behind the house appropriate meet requirements? Behind, the back of the house?
Setbacks.
Yeah, setbacks, about 50, 50 feet, whatever it requires.
Apologize. What was the question again?
Setbacks, Charlie, the back, in the rear of the home.
Yeah, so they're proposed at 12.25 feet where 50 feet is required, so, and just to give the board clarity, so the width of the lot, so if you look at the left-hand side of the screen here, you got a dimension of 69.20 feet, so if you had full compliance with the front and rear yard setback, you would have no buildable area, so. And I think it's also important to note that the existing structure, you can kinda see it underlaid underneath there, it's setback closer to that rear property line, so while they do need their variance, they are improving the condition. Like I said, if, if there was strict compliance with the bulk standards as far as the front, rear, and side yard setback, the lot would be, like, you wouldn't be able to build anything on this lot. It would be very difficult.
I think I heard you say currently it's about eight feet the rear setback?
Correct.
Okay, so there's an improvement there, going to 12.
That's a bulk variance requirement.
Yeah.
But what's behind it? Yeah. Nothing.
Okay.
The area behind it is wooded, so, and, you know, I don't, haven't looked at the subdivision maps or anything like that or history, but I think this is like 1501 and the lot behind is 1601, but I venture at some point they were probably in common ownership and subdivided at some point, so, you know, whoever owned that property previously knew that there was, they were creating an undersized lot to a certain extent, so.
Thank you.
There's enough, you got anything else, anybody? Okay, let's go to public. Okay, let's go to public. I need a motion to go to public.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we open the hearing to the public.
I'll second it.
Postman, Mr. Cantor, seconded by Mr. Cabaracus. On favor?
Yes.
Okay, statement for opening to public?
Just give the attorney a second. He's gonna swear you in.
Okay.
Oh. Do you swear the testimony? You'll give me the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Okay, please state your names for the record, and you're a judge.
I'm Angela, and this is Bob Strzakowski. We live at 41 Seton Hall Drive. And we also own the property at 38 Vandevere, which is across the street from the lot that you're proposing. I just wrote a bunch of notes. I heard you address a few of them, but I, there's a few that are concerning to us from a safety point of view. Because you did address, um, the lot is on a bend, which is very concerning. The one end of Vandevere comes in at 45 miles per hour, and then right where that is, is 35. So there is a speed issue there. Also, the other end of Vandevere, if you're not aware, is like an industrial complex. There's multiple tractor trailers come in and out of there all the time. The road is not very wide. I can tell you from experience, uh, I'm, we are living in, in the Country Meadows development for 31 years. Multiple neighbors. I was talking to a friend of mine today that doesn't even live in the neighborhood and is terrified of this bend. She says it's very dangerous. I've seen people walk. There's no shoulder at this, in this bend. So I'm glad you addressed the curbing sidewalks. 'Cause we were talking about if there was gonna be a sidewalk added, our curb's gonna be added. There's no shoulder. There's 45 miles an hour at one end, goes into 35 at that bend. Is people really gonna slow down? Probably not. We were asking, are the, is the, the road would be expanded? The other side of Vandevere, where our side is, all brand-new telephone poles put in. They just all rewired that whole section. So where would you be expanding the road? Would you be tearing that whole, I mean, that would be something we would like to know for a future. When I went down to the township to find out about the structure, because I received a letter, they just handed me a bunch of blueprints and I took photos because I, there was nothing scaled down for me. I was looking at my phone, because they mentioned it was a four-bedroom house. I have on my phone, it's a five-bedroom house. There's three bedrooms upstairs, two downstairs. My concern is with a one-car garage and one driveway. You know, I mean, I, we're a family of six. I mean, it's a parking lot in front of my house. Where are people parking? You have kids down the road, they have friends. Where are you parking? There is no rooms for parking. In addition, um, my husband brought up, backing out of that driveway is a blind spot. The, the neighbor on that corner of Seton Hall and Vandevere, his whole, his whole sidewalk is lined with bushes. Even pulling out, you would be obstructed view of all the bushes. His whole, come, right there. So as you're approaching thi- this new house that they wanna build, you're, you're gonna back out of this house. This is what you're looking in front of you. Bushes. So you can't see oncoming traffic and you're talking 45 miles an hour. We wanted to bring that up to let you know. Like I said, we, we're, we're living there 31 years. We see things that you probably don't see. There's a lady that walks there. To be honest to God, I, I don't know how she hasn't been hit by a car. I wouldn't let my children drive with a bicycle on that road. That, that's how small, there, there's no shoulder. You can see it. There's no shoulder. If the family that's gonna live in this house, you're gonna have parties, but where are you parking the cars? There is zero parking on Vandevere in front of this lot. I know they mentioned the eight, setback of 18 feet. I mean, is that from the house or is that from the porch that's in front of it? I don't know where the structure is, is determined from the setback. And I'm assuming with the sidewalk, just like my neighborhood, you, you own the first four feet, correct?
Yes.
So... I didn't know, looking at the blueprint that they gave me, I didn't know this, the side, the square footage of the house, 'cause I thought it was going to be an enormous, well, it's, if it's, if it's 18 feet, 18 feet from the street, I mean, with oncoming cars, tractor trailers, buses, I mean, it's... I, it was a safety concern that we wanted to address here this evening. So that's what we wanted. I'm trying to see if there's anything else. Did you wanna add anything to that?
I got like three, four bedrooms. Hard reasons, that's the reason, exactly, because there weren't really room on that lot. That's, that's the smallest part of the lot on that side.
If there's a lot, arrows, a lot, on the bend, so it's really the septic, where is it leaching out into, is it leaching to the street? Or is it leaching to the guy?
Charlie, could you address some of her questions? I mean...
Yeah, so to, I'll just start where we're at now. So the septic system, so this board doesn't have jurisdiction on the approval of the septic system, right? That's something that goes to the Board of Health. Any application for a septic system in Monmouth County, they review that. They're gonna look at the setback to the property lines. They're gonna look at the setback to the, uh, the front property line, the rear property line, setback to the house and make sure it complies. We asked a question about the seasonal high-water table because if you got a high-water table and then it's mounted and you got this white elephant in the front yard, so that doesn't seem to be a concern here. If they can't get signed off on a board of health for the septic system, they're gonna be right back before this board, you know, because this is conditioned on them getting Board Health approval if the board's inclined to act fairly. Regarding the concerns regarding the driveway and the availability of parking. So the resident is correct. I, there is five bedrooms. One of them's a master bedroom. I was just going by. They have bedrooms one through four. So regardless, they still do comply with RSIS. Three bedroom, three parking spaces are required for a bed, five-bedroom home. Having said that, I, I do think it's a valid concern regarding, like, any house that's here. That driveway coming 90 degrees out onto Vandevere Road with the curb. Ken, would the applicant be amenable to providing like a hammerhead or like a bump-out for, for turnaround?
Yeah.
He does, too. I'm happy that he did. So the county has what we call a K-turn driveway system that we put on any driveway that goes through a county road. We'll use that design here, so there'll be a backup.
Okay, I think that's an excellent idea because I concur with, with us residents have said, 'cause I do use that road. I do go to a nursery, which is close by. And they do have a weight limit on that road. But I don't think, it's, you know, I still see trucks going down.
Mention, or every time there's construction, they detour all the vehicles onto Vandevere. And they're big, massive trucks.
I, I totally get, I'm, I think it's nice that you came to express your concern on the safety issue. If, if it stays the way it is, and we don't have a curb and a sidewalk there, it's gonna be as bad.
Well, it's a concern for us also, 'cause, I mean, we're family people. We have four children. I mean, to have 18 feet just in the front of your house. Nothing in the backyard. Where are your children playing? And then eventually, kids grow up. My neighbor and I joke, 'cause he has, he's a family of six. It looks like a parking lot in front of your house. And then when other, their friends come over, it's even more. So it's like, where are you really, it's just a bit, the, the curve is just a bad thing. It's, it's just, it is what it is. But where are you parking all these vehicles? You're probably, you're gonna have a couple, they're each gonna have a vehicle. They have two kids, three kids, four ki, it's a, down the road, they're all gonna be driving.
You understand that if we leave it the way it is, somebody could move into this house and it's gonna be the same problem.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and we can't...
The house that's there now was built, I think I looked up, in 1943.
Yeah.
It's a postage stamp compared to what you wanna put there now. So you're putting, you, you get something from, it looks like the size of the shed in my backyard, and now you're gonna put a big, and I believe this house also has a basement. So it's gonna, I mean, I don't know what the setback is from the, from the, the curb. Not the curb, uh, the general, the, the side where the Seton Hall gentleman is. I mean, are you gonna be looking right into his house? Because it's gonna be so close.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. O'Donnell?
I think you should, one, contact the police force to lower the speed limit. And you'd have to do that probably through the council by ordinance, 'cause I agree with you, 45's too fast.
When I look at the end, it's really not busy, okay? You're talking about the industrial, it only, it lowers to 35 when you hit the, hit the neighborhood.
But then you're going 50 or 55.
You're absolutely correct.
So it should be lower.
You're absolutely correct.
And those bushes on that turn there, it's my understanding that the town, it's a town road, I think. So we have 22 foot from the center line in. And those bushes are in the site triangle and they should be removed. Because everybody that comes there can't see with those bushes like that.
Well, please don't tell that homeowner I said it.
And the person that lives there isn't gonna like it. But maybe they could put up a small fence that doesn't interfere or cut them down so you could see. Because it is in the site triangle and we generally don't allow that. And that's my opinion.
Does the township currently have a setback if you're on a corner home?
I don't know, you know, precisely, 'cause that's not our jurisdiction. I'm just making a recommendation, some things that you could do to help the situation.
Does people put, plant things and they start out small and then they just get big?
Well, if they get too big, then we have the right to come down if they block the site triangle. If they don't, then they go as high as they want.
Question is with the curb and the sidewalk, are they gonna allow for the, the width of the road? When they do that, are they gonna do the curb and then say, "Well, we gotta make the work bigger and then carry it all up"? How are they gonna work that one out?
I don't know.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think what they're proposing right now is to curb and sidewalk off the existing edge of pavement. And like, we could have them get some consistent shoulder off the fog line. You know, to make them match what's coming off that subdivision, you know, I imagine would get pretty costly to do like an eight-foot shoulder or something like that. But, uh, you know, if we could get two or three feet off the fog line and get a little bit more separation and clean it up, I think that's something within reason if the applicant's amenable to that. Regarding the street trees that they're proposing, I, I, I do generally think that that's a nice aesthetic. But given that there's concern regarding this bend, I think maybe it might be more suitable for those to be planted on the site if the applicant would be amenable to that, Ken? Instead of...
Trees off the right-of-way.
Yeah, I think with the sightline concern, putting more trees once those become mature. While I like the streetscape part of it, I think maybe if those were to be put on the property or maybe, maybe make a contribution to the tree fund in lieu of that, if the board doesn't want them planted on the property. I think, given the concern that's being represented with the driveway and things like that, I don't think that...
I, I think that's, I agree, because certain trees have low canopies and that is gonna be a safety issue, so.
The response is, seeing where the septic system is, I'd rather make a contribution to the tree fund than bring those trees in against the septic system.
Okay, let's, I think that's...
So we'll take the trees off and we'll fund.
Okay.
That's fine.
They're gonna go somewhere, so I'm happy about that, so.
Perfectly fine. So you'd have, and the two-foot of shoulder outside of the curb, I'm certain that Mr. Halpert and Mr. Cunliffe can work out the details of that. That's acceptable. The curb is acceptable. The sidewalk was our offer and switching the trees, which was our offer, to a contribution is acceptable. We can also, just to the extent that we have control over any of the vegetation that's along the roadway, we can agree that we'll remove that vegetation down to a height of under 30 inches so that it won't be in anybody's sight distance. I think almost all of it's on somebody else's property, though.
Okay.
Can I just ask, what were the, what was the square footage of this home again?
The square footage of the existing home?
Uh, the one you wanna build?
The proposed home is 1,684 square feet footprint.
Is that with or without the basement?
That's the footprint of the building.
That's the footprint of the building. It's a two-story.
Oh, the two-story, okay, so that's without the basement. Okay. Well, thank you for addressing our concerns. We're just looking out for the safety of everybody that drives there. I mean...
We appreciate that. I think we made some concessions to that.
Just wanted to address things that maybe you didn't think of, 'cause we live there.
Yeah.
So thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I would just say that I think the curbing is, goes a long way on this application, 'cause if you look at Street View right now, it's kind of a gravel driveway that's opening and like, you know, there's nothing really to stop people from parking seven, eight cars if they wanted to. I think curbing and having a defined curb cut will like kinda help to serve, regulate that. And they, obviously, if you start and wind it to eight-foot shoulder, then like, are you gonna have people trying to park on the side of the road there? So, you know, I think two-foot will give us a little bit more of a cleaner edge there, but also not invite people to be parking on Vandevere where they probably shouldn't be parking. So I think that's a suitable compromise.
Okay.
Maybe a no-parking sign might be helpful. And there's also a lot of deer. See that, that wooded area? My, my daughter actually...
I would, I would advise you...
Got hit by a deer in March, driving home on Vandevere. It just came out and smashed right into the car. So it's, uh, it's certain things you just don't think of.
I get it.
So, um...
Appreciate that.
Get some radar there, too.
Sorry?
Radar.
Radar.
But you can always come to the council meeting and express your concerns on the speed, so that's something...
Well, I was concerned with the speed because I know people wa, I was just talking to a friend of mine today and she, she doesn't even live in the neighborhood. She lives, um, like off Ambiance. And she goes, "Oh, I hate driving on that bend." And I was, we were talking about people walking and she's like, she goes, "Yeah, a couple times." Because you don't see people walking. You're almost, there's no shoulder. So I, I mean, there's a lady that walks every day. I mean, I'm like, she's crazy. Because I, I'm surprised she hasn't been hit. I mean, there's no shoulder and the road is not really like super wide, so.
Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Motion to close. Second.
Mr. Cantor, Mr. Hughes, second. On favor?
Yes.
Nothing further, Charlie, Christine? Okay, Mr. Pate, anything?
Very briefly, I think that the offer of your applicant has been made very clear to the board members and to the public. The additions that were suggested by Mr. Cunliffe and the comments of the neighbor are acceptable. We'd ask the board to consider this application favorably.
Okay. Seeing none other, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Motion to close to public?
We, we just did.
We did. You did?
Yeah.
Well, thank you for making sure. We did twice.
Okay, this time, what is the pleasure of the board?
Before we go, taking out those, not having to do the trees, that would probably help facilitate the driveway modifications you wanna make as well, correct?
The hammerhead will be easier, correct?
The hammerhead, yes, sir.
Okay. With that, then, Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we approve this for the board. The modifications being that the sidewalk and the curbing, removal of the trees and putting in the hammerhead driveway certainly upgrades the safety and usefulness of this property.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Ryan. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Orozco. Could we have a roll call?
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Cabaracus?
Yes.
And Chairman Mertens?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you all. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you for the courtesy of taking us early.
Okay, we'll start the next case, which is, let me get my glasses here. Case number BA 25-13, EAS Howe Properties Company LLC. Use variance preliminary and final major site plan. Application of EAS Howe Properties Co. LLC as applicant and owner seeking approval to modify the existing car wash and automobile service station, oil change facility, provide vacuum stall spaces and revise the site circulation, parking, stormwater and infrastructure, landscaping and relocation of the emergency asset, access driveway to the South, Southard Fire Department on premise known as Block 35.83, Lots 33, 34, and 35, 4629 U.S. Highway 9, expiration February 19th, 2026. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Thomas Trautner. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Chiesa, Shehenian, and Gian Tomasi here on behalf of the applicant, EAS Propco LLC.
Okay.
And with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'll provide a brief introduction and we have a few witnesses.
Okay, so let's swear in your, anybody who's gonna testify.
Sure. So we have three witnesses this evening. So sitting to my left is Lawrence Khachouri, who's a representative of the applicant. He'll be a fact witness. I have with me Christine Cofone from the Cofone Consulting Group, our professional planner, and Mr. Robert Prude from Dynamic Engineering, our site civil engineer.
Okay.
Including, yeah. Do you swear the testimony? Give me the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, state your names for the record and spell your last, please.
Lawrence Khachouri, K-H-A-K-S-H-O-U-R-I.
Christine Cofone, C-O-F-O-N-E.
Robert Prude, F-Z and Frank, R-E-U-D.
Witnesses are sworn.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So again, this is the property located at 4629 Route 9. The property is located in the Highway Development 1 Zone, or the HD 1 Zone. It's presently developed by a car wash and automobile service station or oil change. And all of that is to remain and to be modified and improved. and to be modified and improved for site circulation. Otherwise, we're here tonight seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval with some variance relief to modify and improve that existing structure, provide vacuum stall spaces, and improve site circulation of the property. There's overall gonna be fourteen parking spaces of the property and fifteen vacuum stalls, as you'll hear in testimony. So car washes and automobile service stations are conditionally permitted in this zone, and as you'll hear in testimony, the existing car wash and what we propose complies with virtually all the conditions for the use, but it does have a pre-existing nonconformity with respect to its location. It's required by ordinance to be 2,500 feet away from another automobile service station and a thousand feet away from public offices, and it's about 300 feet away from the Mavis Discount Tire to the south and within a thousand feet of Township Hall where we're sitting right now. So therefore, we're gonna need variance relief pursuant to 4055D-3, and we're also seeking variance relief from the Township Code for a number of D2 variances, we're expanding...
Hey, Tom, we could, the board did through the engineer and...
Well, yeah, all right, I could skip past all that, so we have, we have a bunch of variances. So as you're gonna hear from the applicant and from our civil engineer and our planner, we'll go over all that. So actually, with that to do, he's already been sworn in, but I can first introduce Mr. Khachuri from the applicant, who can give the board a little bit of background regarding why we're here and what's not. So, Mr. Khachuri, could you just give the board a little bit overview of who you are, your company, and, and basically why you're looking at this particular site?
Hi, everyone, thank you for your time. So I'm one of the owners of Express Auto Spa, we are a family-run car wash and oil change operator in New York and New Jersey, today we have...
Could you speak into the mic, it's that triangle, sorry. Yeah, yeah.
Better? Today, we have fourteen locations across New York and New Jersey, twelve in New Jersey and two in New York. And our business model to date has been acquiring existing rundown, full-service car wash and oil change facilities and investing in capital to modernize them with new state-of-the-art car wash equipment and convert them to a more automated car wash model, where we improve site circulation and install, you know, state-of-the-art equipment and technology, where now there's an emphasis on, on car wash membership model with self-vacuums, and it changes the site circulation significantly and has a lot of benefits for the end-users and the customers, it reduces wait times. With the membership model, it actually is, is, you know, cheaper for, for a lot of the customers, because they can save with a monthly subscription, and so we've seen a lot of success with this model throughout New Jersey. And with this particular site, this was an acquisition we made earlier this year, it was a part of a portfolio that we bought. We're excited to join the Howell community, we think that this site fits our model pretty well. It's been rundown for quite some time, the prior owner neglected it, didn't invest, you know, the right amount of capital into it and really let it run down, get rundown, and so we're excited to modernize it, bring it back to life, and, and look forward to hopefully getting a favorable outcome tonight.
And, Mr. Khachuri, one question, because we'll go over a lot of stuff with our civil engineer, but if you could just give the, the board the benefit, what, you know, what are your days, days open, hours of operation in, you know, summer versus winter?
Sure, so we're open seven days a week, Sunday is 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday is 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Now, when the clocks go forward, it'll be 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
No further question of the applicant, but he'll be here throughout the evening to the extent anything comes up, we can bring him back.
Are you changing the car wash equipment?
Yes.
We go there all the time, thank you.
Yes, the new car wash equipment's actually already installed, so...
Yeah, they've been working on the site for the last couple of weeks there.
Yeah, we, to date, we've done a lot of, you know, HVAC, electrical plumbing work inside the building, plus the equipment, and so if we get approved here, we can, you know, begin on-site work and open pretty quickly, so...
Okay.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, so, we, if you wanna save the public or refer to the end, or we...
Tom, just go to your engineer.
Yeah, right, yeah, we'll do a public for everybody.
So let, let's bring Mr. Prude back up, and I'll see if you have him qualified as a expert in the field of civil engineering. So, Mr. Prude, you've already been sworn in, so can you give the, the board the benefit of your education experience and prior testimony and license to seeking to have you qualified?
Certainly, I have a Bachelor of Science degree in civil engineering from Lehigh University, I've been doing civil engineering and land development consulting for over thirty years now, primarily in New Jersey, I'm also licensed, I'm licensed in New Jersey, I'm also licensed in six other states in the region.
And you're all current, the...
All current licensed in New Jersey, yes.
We accept your qualifications.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Prude, you're familiar with the subject of tonight's application?
I am, yes.
And you were involved in the supervision and the preparation of the plans that were submitted in support of the application?
Yes, I was.
So can you please give the board an overview of the property as it relates to the surrounding area? And I don't, we, we have a number of pre-marked exhibits, there's A-17 is an overall aerial map, A-18 is a, is a more condensed aerial map, but I'll let you orientate the board where you wanna go.
Yeah, so what's up on the screen now is the overall aerial map, that is taken from a service called Nearmap, which is an image from March 11th, 2024, that shows not only the site highlighted in yellow, but the surrounding area on Route 9, I'm sure the board is very familiar, Route 9 runs north and south, that's left and right, so the left side of the page would be north, we're here in the municipal building that's just north of the jug handle, the site is outlined in yellow at the intersection with Locust Avenue, and you can see, as, as the board's aware, and we know Route 9 is a heavy commercial corridor in the HD1 Zone where this property is located. Immediately to the north of the site is a small property that was most recently a foundry, so a, a form of commercial or business use there. The next site to the north is the Southern Fire Department before the jug handle and ultimately the municipal building. Uniquely here, there is an access, Somay's Way, that comes from Locust Street across an easement behind the property, serving the Southern Fire Department to allow ingress and egress of emergency vehicles and responding personnel to get to the fire department or to get to Locust Avenue and points east without having to get onto Route 9 and loop through a jug handle, so that's a critical element there. If we can now go to the aerial map exhibit?
I believe it's A-18.
A-18? So this is, excuse me, an enlarged version of the same aerial image at the same orientation, so Route 9's at the bottom of the page, north is at the left side of the page. Now we're looking a little bit closer at what's on the site today. For, for record, this is Block 35.83, Lots 33, 34, and 45, and 35, known as 4629 Route 9. Again, it's in the HD1 Zone, as noted, it is, car washes and service stations are conditional uses. This property is just shy of one acre at .99 acres, that one acre does include the easement area and drive on the east side of the property, so the usable area is just a little bit less. Existing on the site today is a 4,860-square-foot building that houses both the car wash, it does include a detail bay in the central portion of the building, and then on the south side is the lube or repair bays that exist today. Circulation through the site is in a counterclockwise direction, there are three lanes off the south of the building that rotate counterclockwise to get either into the service bays or at the north end to the tunnel wash. Access is from Route 9 and Route 9 only to this facility, what is, again, Somay's Way, which comes off Locust, is protected from access to the site today and will remain that way under future development, so that you can't come in from Locust to get to the site, protects the integrity of that emergency access point. So as you would come in off of Route 9, you can circulate in a counterclockwise direction today, there is one lane that serves the lube facility, that stacks about eight cars, which is quite a bit for this type of service, and there are two lanes that come around to the car wash. There are also fourteen parking spaces on the site today, several facing Route 9 and several facing Locust.
Are they for employees?
They're generally for employees, yes. I believe that maybe for the detail bay that's there today, there might be some advance drop of cars and things like that, that, I'll get into it, but that's not part of the proposed development, but yes, those are generally for employees. Topographically, the site generally runs from east to west towards Route 9, there are some inlets on site, there is an underground stormwater management system, oversized 36-inch pipe, perforated pipe that collects and recharges water from the current system today before it outlets into Route 9. As you can see at the top of the page, we do border a residential zone, immediately adjacent to our property is what's known as Lot 58, that is twenty-five feet wide by Locust, goes back to about 105 feet wide as you get to the north end of our property and expands further as you go north, that is a homeowners' association property for the development that is, very dry, immediately to the east, so the immediately adjacent property is that residential buffer on the residential property. Now, if we can turn to the site plan rendering, which is exhibit...
I think A-19.
A-19. Begin to describe existing conditions, so this is the same view and orientation as we just had with the existing conditions, what we've done is we've superimposed the site plan and the landscape plan on the aerial image to represent the proposed development. Beginning with the customer's entry into the site, you'll still come in off of Route 9 as the same entry point as exists today, the building remains the same, with the car wash on the north side of the building, a single-lane car wash. In the middle, it will become operations, that prior detail bay that exists here is being eliminated as a detail bay, we'll be adding a few parking spaces, including the handicap parking space in front of that, and then on the south side remains the, the two lube bay lanes as well. Circulation for the car wash will remain the same, it'll be in a counterclockwise direction with multiple lanes coming in for two purposes, one is, there is a member, as the applicant described, as Lawrence described, there's a membership service here, so if you're a member, you'll have, it's almost like an EZ Pass, you'll come in, there are two pay stations right here, you'll, you'll wave a fob and you'll be passed through, membership right in, and as with EZ Pass, you'll get sort of priority dispatch into the car wash. The other lane that's there would be for paying customers, it's all cashless, you would come in, select your treatment, and, and proceed through the car wash. Again, as indicated, this is all very automated, brand-new equipment, more extensive dryers within the wash bay lane, so that at the egress to the wash, unlike older or more conventional car washes, we might have a team of employees drying cars, cars are fanning out, in this case, near Route 9 entrance to get dried off, that is not necessary here, cars will come out, there'll be a little bit of touch-up drying, maybe around your rearview mirrors, and that's it, and then you'll be able to exit and pull in to exit the wash. The other change that's proposed here is the addition of vacuums along the frontage of Locust and along the frontage of Route 9, there's a total of fifteen vacuum stations, there are positioned prior to the staging lanes or the queue lanes for the car wash, so a customer would come in, do some self-vacuuming there, and then enter the car wash lane. Those vacuums operate with the same hours of operation as the car wash, so the turbine that runs that vacuum system will be shut off when the car wash is closed. That turbine has been repositioned with the latest revisions and is now located here in this triangular area facing Locust, it's about a nine-by-12 pad that houses the turbine equipment and feeds all of the vacuum pipes that run along Route 9 and Locust Avenue.
So can you give the board some context on what exactly is the size of the turbine in the pad, there's a fence, right, that's screening that from the public right of way, 'cause that needs relief, 'cause it's in a front yard area, one for the, the structure itself, but then also the fence not meeting the front yard setback requirement, is there somewhere else on the site that this could be relocated to maybe be less intrusive from the public right of way?
So from a, good questions, and from an efficiency standpoint, the turbine really wants to be as close to the vacuums as possible, providing the, the vacuum and suction for the vacuum, so it really wants to be as close as possible to the vacuums themselves, so what we're doing is we're using this triangular area to, to feed it there. We understand that we do require relief for proximity or with being within the front yard, we have discussed internally what we can do to mitigate that and to eliminate the fence in the front yard, we can take that nine-by-tock pad and shift that into the site by about three or so feet, creating additional space on Locust Avenue so that we can put an evergreen, a narrow evergreen row there to provide a more naturalized screen within that area. There is already landscaping on the east and west side of that pad, so that'll provide some nice four-season screening around that pad within the, within the front yard there.
So let me ask you this question, so there's the driveway on the north, or the, it's the east side, so it's the top of the page here that services the fire department, and I think the town uses that also as an informal ingress-egress. That tree that's in that little hemisphere island between the drive aisle and the parking area, could that not go there?
We originally looked at it there, we did move it to the, to the west to get it in this area, the reason we moved it is to get a little bit more central, so that the amount of tubing was equal on either side of the vacuums, also that allowed us to provide a little bit more landscaping and screening in this area, understanding that we are within a, a ten, there's a ten-foot-wide buffer here, so by shifting the drive lane to the east, we want more room to put landscape buffer there.
So it could be done, it would just be a little bit more costly, 'cause you need bigger pipe?
Correct.
Yeah, so as the board knows, that's not something that this board weighs, you know, cost-effectiveness or cost and practical, uh, practability, so to me, you know, they need relief for it, if they moved to where that tree was, they certainly need, still need the relief, but it would be less impactful, I think, from the proximity to Route 9 and Locust Avenue, and, you know, it's not gonna be right up on the front property line, to me, I think if it's something that can be done, I, I would recommend the board, you know, consider as a requirement.
Along with that, Charlie, I'd like to ask, all the turbine, is it loud?
So we do have information provided by the manufacturer on the noise levels of that, and I wanna make sure I quote the right numbers.
Not to go against what Charlie's saying, I'm just thinking if it gets closer to houses...
As provided by the manufacturer, the readings are 38 decibels at 30 feet away, so the NJSA 7:29, the noise standards for the state require 50 decibels at night and 63 during the day, so we're below that, that's the residential receiving line, so in this case, I believe it would be, even though this is not a, there's not a residential structure on this lot, we would apply that to the east property line here, so, one of the other reasons we moved it was not because we wouldn't comply with noise ordinances, but, or statutes, but we did wanna move the, that further from the residential receiving line, so, we'll, we'll defer to the board on, on what they feel is more appropriate, we were kind of weighing residential receiving versus, you know, the ambient noise levels and what's happening on Route 9 as far as the impact there.
Could you also put an enclosure on the structure, so the noise would not be an issue?
Well, I think we, we looked at a fence that was more sound attenuating, and based on the feedback, we, we switched to landscaping, so...
I get that, what I wanted to ask is, do they make enclosures that also mitigate sound impacts from those types of infrastructure?
I, I don't know specifically from the manufacturer, but I think any type of fence material will provide some sound attenuation.
Yeah, so what I would say is, let's see what the public says, let's see if there's any concerned neighbors who live to the east of this property and whether they are particularly concerned about the sound. I get, I get the sensitivity to not wanting to move it closer towards a residential property and the potential for so, noise impacts, but, you know, they're coming to this board asking for relief of something, like, there's other means to ameliorate that, if they put the, relocate it so it's not right up on the front property line, if the public and the board is not so concerned with it being where it is, I think it would certainly need to be thoroughly landscaped to, you know, so it's not looking like a, you know, a fence or a wall right on the property line, you know, and... and a-
I, I was just asking, thirty decibels is low. I'm a normal radio guy. I know what that is, so I'm, I'm not concerned about that.
Charlie, if, and anybody, if we eliminated one of the vacuum cleaners, it'd be more ability to move it in and keep it in its current spot. I'm more inclined to say, keep it as close to Route Nine and away from the houses as possible, but maybe just eliminate one vacuum cleaner.
That, that's also certainly a valid point. I will say that they do need a variance from not meeting the parking requirement. I think they're short by three or four spaces, so that would exacerbate that. Um, you know-
That's not a parking spot, that's a vacuum spot.
Yeah, someone could still park there. No, I, I get it. So, um, it's certainly a trade-off.
Is it also safe to assume that when the facilities close for the day, that the turbines are shut off electronically, they can't be used?
That's correct, yes.
Is that the, the new system Garden State Car Wash has it, where it's all, you don't pay for individual vacuum cleaners, you just, it's all one system that-
There, there is no pay. I'm not particularly familiar with Garden State Car Wash, but in this system, you do not pay for the vacuum. You will vacuum before you enter the lane, so it's for, for customers.
They're all, they're all in one system, and it's just individual-
That's right.
That's what I-
That one's-
I think it may be similar to what you're-
Yeah, it is. Okay.
Is there anything stopping someone from coming in, using the vacuum, and then just doing like a K-turn and pull out of the site to not have to go through? We've, we've seen it, we've seen it the other way around, and I imagine the, the next folks might have it that way, where you have to go through the car wash to then use the vacuum, so it kind of preempts it, but-
That, that is another design standard in this case because of the layout of the site. It made sense to do it before. But there will be employees, and that maybe, just to relay that, there are, will be about four or five employees for the car wash. Again, not what a, a old-school kind of car wash would entail. There will be several employees that will be outside, so they'll be able to monitor the use of the vacuums and make sure that there aren't people coming in from, from on-site.
You can't get out of there.
So just to continue where I left off, if, if we're, if I can keep going?
Yeah, yeah. I was going to tell you to keep going.
By all means interrupt whenever you have questions. I just want to, where we left off, there are about four to five employees at the wash. There are about five to seven in the lube base, about nine to twelve employees total. There are, in addition to the fifteen vacuums, there are fourteen parking spaces on site. There are five that we put on the north property line. There are parallel parking spaces. There are five adjacent to the south side of the building, and there are several parking spaces extended beyond that. There's a small concrete structure here that prevents us from continuing that row of parking. And then there is an ADA and one additional space in front of what was the detail center. So from a parking standpoint, the ordinance requires ten spaces per wash lane, so the car wash would require ten. As I said, there's only four or five employees, so that's about half of, of what the ordinance standard is. And then there's, for the lube bay, there's a, just want to make sure I have that right.
So the, so the lube, so the lube bays will remain? You're going to continue to do that?
The lube bays will remain, yeah. And so, when I talk about the existing conditions, I mentioned that everything, everything's circulated in a counterclockwise direction. We are reversing the circulation of the lube bays, so you'll come straight in as you come in to get into lube bays and exit out the rear. The main reason for that, as I said, the, the current lube bays is, if you were to circulate in a counterclockwise direction, there's stacking for at least eight cars there. That's not necessary for the lube bays for the number of vehicles coming in here, not nearly that much. We have four bays available. We have stacking for four cars in front. That's more than enough for the operations here. So we figured reverse that circulation, get people coming in and coming out the rear, and then you just follow the circulation pattern there.
Mr. Frank-
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Matt.
I was just going to ask, the detail area is going to turn like offices or something, I assume?
That'll turn into storage inside the building, so that space that was detailed. I think that plays into the parking a little bit, because if you have a detail bay, you may have people dropping off a car, coming back later to pick it up. In this case, this model is entirely designed for queuing and circulation. You come through the car wash, you get your vacuum, you get in line, and you're out. If you're coming for the lube, you get in line and you're out. There, there may be brake changes or other minor things happening there, but everything that you can do from a pull-in, pull-out standpoint, there is no car drop-off. There's no appointment service or anything like that in this bay. So everything in this model is designed for circulation in and out of the site, which certainly lowers the need for parking. It's pretty much covering the employees on-site. So the fourteen spaces that we have, one of those is ADA. We have the order of nine to twelve employees. Not all of them are going to drive. Some are going to carpool, some are going to get, take a bus, some are going to bike in. So I think there's enough parking. And then you have the separately, you have the fifteen vacuum spaces. There was a question in the review letters about EV charging here. If you look in the EV statute, anything under twenty-five, any, any commercial retail under twenty-five does not require EV parking. So we only have four, again, fourteen parking spaces. I don't really count the vacuums as parking spaces, so we're not required to provide EV parking on the site.
Yeah. Mr. Frank, I wanted to talk about, you just brought up the, the reversal of the circulation into the service side of the building, where you used to run counterclockwise. Now you're, you're having these cars come straight in from the highway.
Uh huh.
And I, I understand it's probably not going to be a whole lot of volume, but it seems to me if you get five cars there, now you may be blocking the flow into where the car wash is, which potentially could back people out onto the highway.
So good, good question. And again, operation, we don't expect that, nearly that level of volume of cars coming in. I just want to be, we, we do, I'll point out, we do have these two spaces, first two spaces here that are pull-through. So if we do find, again, there will be people out there monitoring. If we do find that cars are backing up, we can have them pull into one of these spaces before they come in. But based upon the traffic letter of no interest that was filed with the DOT to maintain the driveway, that looked at the ITE traffic for both the lube facility repair as well as the car wash, and the number of the peak hour trips would not require more than four-car stacking. So we don't expect it to be a problem. But in the event that there is a peak point where there are a couple extra cars, we do have these two here that are pull-throughs that are convenient to use for that purpose.
These spots down here would be for employee parking?
Those are also vacuum. Route Nine is also vacuum.
So this would be employee parking then?
Those are also employee, correct.
The reason why I'm asking is I'm thinking, well, let's say you did have a bit of a backup, and you had some of these cars backed up here waiting for all changes. Perhaps you could park them somewhere, but I guess, being that these are vacuums, that's not an option. But the access to these spots is a little bit blocked off. If there was a long line of cars here waiting to get to the car wash, how would you get these cars into a parking space, staging them to, to be serviced?
So there is stacking for thirteen cars, and with the express model and the, the time to, to process cars, we don't expect that stacking to go beyond thirteen. So this is really access to the vacuums, access to the parking spaces. So we don't expect this to be necessarily additional queue. That's really just access to the vacuums.
Good. All right.
I do want to circle back and, and go through where we stand again with regard to the-
Excuse me.
Yep.
Mr. Cantor. Might I suggest that we, if, if cars are stacked up on Route Nine, that we prohibit cars from coming, from stacking up on Route Nine? Like, if, if you can't get in, you're, you're, you can't, you can't stop on Route Nine. Is that, is that something we can do?
It's Route Nine's jurisdiction as far as the ingress-egress.
But our police department would be involved if that happened.
Agreed. Um-
I mean, I know in the winter, when you get the solder on the cars, these things get real crowded.
Yeah, no, no. What I'm saying is, it wouldn't be like an applicant. I mean, they could, we could certainly request that they-
Well, it's their driveway, Charlie.
Self-police it, right? But I mean, police, they could, you know, someone's going to have to call the police if it's an issue. Um, yeah, I don't know if there's any kind of special signage that they could put at the entryway, if there's like a, like a significant queue that might identify the people looking to pull into the site, that there's too much of a queue to come into the site, you know what I mean? You know, thirteen cars is a lot. I don't know that you're going to have-
It's three lanes. I believe that right lane is usually for cars-
Yeah, there is an extra lane there. Yeah, there is.
Yeah, going into the junk handle, plus the bus uses it, plus cars coming out of Locust.
That's good.
And I, I bring this up because there, you know, there are peak hours, peak times, where you could have an excessive amount of flow. I recently went to an oil change place in Freehold, only about two weeks ago, showed up first thing in the morning when they first opened, and there were seven cars waiting in front of me for the doors to open. So it, you know, it's not out of the question for these backups to happen at certain times.
I, I don't disagree. What I was trying to point out is, again, we have stacking for thirteen, which we feel is, is very adequate for the use of the wash. Keep in mind, we also have fifteen vacuum spaces, so anybody before they get into that thirteen-car stack, you have room for fifteen cars to, to be vacuuming and staging. So theoretically, not counting the, the several cars that would be in the wash, you have thirteen plus fifteen vacuuming, you have twenty-eight potential vehicles on-site staging before you even get into the car wash. I think that's more than enough based upon the, the peak hour per IT was seventy-eight trips in an hour, and that's basically three cycles through here, which would be, you know, twenty minutes, and it's, it's not nearly twenty minutes to get through a car wash. So I think we have more than, more than enough capacity here with providing the lanes. We also have the double lanes here. So-
Did you tell the board, like, did you give context, like, what's the typical cycle for going through the actual car wash? Do we know, like, is it a minute, two minutes, five minutes?
You got it, you got it, get him up.
Right there at the podium.
Once, once you get into the, the front of the tunnel, you're in and out in less than two minutes.
On the car wash?
In, on the car wash.
What's typical for this, the service station? How, how many cars can you service at one time in the new?
So in the oil change, you could service four at one time. So you're stacking, then that's stacking above four cars being serviced at once.
And how much time do you spend typically on each one?
Ten to twelve minutes.
Okay.
Do you anticipate the vacuum spaces all being filled ever when cars are waiting to use the car wash?
So we limit the amount of time that, that a customer can use the vacuum to ten minutes, and that's really being policed by our manager. So our site manager's responsibility is to ensure that the flow of traffic is always circulating. And so that, on busy days, that's when it's going to be the most important, is to ensure that ten minutes is, is not being, you know, that no customer is using it for more than ten minutes, to ensure that, that, that is not an issue.
I know you have the thirteen cars that have passed on the vacuum spaces, but if ever there were more than that in the queue, it seems like cars could either get blocked into the vacuum spaces, or there could be some type of-
So, so the, the lane to, all the way to the right is going to be the members-only lane. The members-only lane is really the EZ Pass lane, and so stacking isn't going to, isn't going to be on that lane more. It's going to be more on the left lane. So we did that intentionally so that the vacuums could be easily, you could, you could enter and exit the vacuums more easily.
But if I'm at the, if I'm getting vacuumed at the top of there, and there's a line, and I'm done vacuuming, do I then have to back out and get in line? Or let's, somebody's got to be nice enough to let me in, or?
So the lane, the, the-
This is New Jersey. People don't do that.
Yeah. So the two, there are two car wash lanes. The car wash lane to the right is the members-only lane. The members-only lane doesn't stack as, as deep as the paying customers' lane, because-
I know, but if I'm not a members-only, if I'm, if I'm paying cash, I'm from vacuuming, and then paying cash, I have to back out and get into the vacuuming lane.
Yes. So you're, so if you're, if you vacuum first, and then you want to get on the paying customers' lane, then, and there's a line, then yes, you have to, you have to work yourself back. But that's also the responsibility of the manager, is to, is to manage that traffic flow.
Okay.
So I just, just want to clarify that. So you said, was it, it was seventy-eight peak hour trips was per IT?
Correct.
And then that's a total, so thirty-nine coming in, thirty-nine going out in the peak hour? All right. So just to give the board context, so if it's two minutes per cycle, you're going to get thirty cars in and out of that one, you know, so you're going to have nine queues typically per the IT queuing, waiting to go through that in, in the peak hour period. So just to give some context. So thirteen, so you got four more, then based off the IT recommendations, it seemed to be appropriate based off what they're saying.
A question. I'm not familiar with this. When you go through this type of car wash, do you just get out of your car?
No. So the new model is the customer stays in the vehicle the entire time.
Okay. Is there any air pumps on your property to put air in your tires?
No.
So you're eliminating that because that causes a little jam?
That, that service is done in the oil change. So if you get an oil change, they'll check there in the tires while your car's being serviced.
And what about restrooms? What kind of restrooms do you have here for the employees?
We have one employee restroom, and then we have, I believe, one in the, in the manager's office, and then two, I think.
Well, do you have a male and a female restroom, or just-
I believe-
They use the same one?
I'd have to ask the architect.
So we could have, we have our architect here tonight. I could have him sworn in, and he could probably answer the question.
Okay.
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name for the record, spill your lie.
Name is Andrew Trocchi, T-R-O-C-C-H-I-A. Firm is Sonnenfeld and Trocchi Architects. We're in Homeville.
Okay, we'll need your-
So can you just give them quickly your benefit of your education and background experience? I'll seek to have you qualified as an expert in architecture.
Licensed architect, bachelor's of architecture from NJIT in Newark. Been practicing well over thirty years. I have my own practice for the same amount of time. We are representing several car wash clients at this moment right now.
And everything's current?
Everything's my license.
Okay, okay. We accept your qualifications.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
There are three restrooms right now. One will probably be specifically for staff because it's off the equipment room, and there's two in the public area, sufficient for this, for this use, as far as the plumbing code is concerned.
But they're separate? Like, one lady's room, one's men's room?
Yeah, there's three, there's three single-use restrooms.
Single use?
Yeah.
So I was just wondering, if I go in there and back in my car, and all of a sudden I got to go to the bathroom, I'm going to need a public one. And then now, while I'm in there, there's more cars coming in, and now I got to back out and try to get back into line. You know, I mean, is that going to be enough to keep the flow going, or you don't expect it to be that busy?
Again, so it's really, if someone needs to use the restroom, obviously more than walking to, and so it's the manager's responsibility just to ensure that the flow of traffic is, is always circulating. And, I mean, it's going to be rare, very, very rare instances where all fifteen vacuums are full and the stack, the line stacking is very deep. That's a very rare instance.
I just want to make sure you thought of that, and that it's not going to create a disturbance, you know, once you get going. And I think you should put signs along the front of your property, because when you come down the road there and make a right to come here to the building, with all that traffic coming up Route Nine, you've got to really get out fast. And if there's anything ever backed up on Route Nine, there's going to be a rear end there. Should be no parking whatsoever on Route Nine, because if anybody tries to park to get in there, when they come flying around a corner, and then they can't realize it's a snowy day, they can't stop, you're going to be one baboom after another. And you might have to, in the beginning, get the cops there, give them a ticket if they stop.
But that's, that's a state road, so I don't know how that works.
Well, I know how it works. I come here, you know, all the time.
No, I understand, I agree that there should be something there, but who, who-
Well, we want it governed by the, by the police, that there is no parking there whatsoever, because when you come around there, right down Locust, and then when you look out, and you just think you got a clear-
Yeah, no, the police would govern that, but who is responsible for putting those signs in?
They are.
Okay. In the state, they don't get state approval for it?
Once they're up, I don't think they, they have to take care of business. The police do. John, is, is Public Works getting involved in that?
Not on a private site, no.
So that would be their obligation.
Responsibility of the property owner.
I mean, for safety reasons.
You're referring to the, the frontage on Route Nine?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think in that case, it would require a petition to the DOT to put any signs up to and for- Yeah, so I think in that case, it would require a petition to the DOT to put any signs up to enforce that.
Well, I want you to do that.
I don't think we would object to that, because I think anything that's safety on Route Nine would be advantageous for the, for the applicant, for the process. But, um, I don't know that, that we can commit to that, to this board, other than that we would petition the DOT to put the sign up.
I would say you do that, and if they say no, then you're relieved of doing it. And if they say yes, then you do it.
Yeah. I think there should be signs up, so at least, you know, make an attempt, because, uh, that could be an issue.
What would be the sign each time?
Just real quick, of the other auto, uh, Express Auto Spas that your company runs, same traffic pattern exist in all of them, or is that unique to this property because it's the way it is?
Each site is, you know, has a different DNA, but the model is exactly the same, where we have two lanes for the car washes, one members-only and one paying customer. Um, each site's a little bit different on where the vacuums are oriented. Some, some in the front before, some after, it just kinda depends on the site. Um, but this is the same setup as all of our sites.
Putting one in Brick. Hmm? There's one, same, you're coming, you're going into Brick as well.
Yeah, that was one, we, part of the portfolio we acquired, one, one was in Brick, Howell, Jackson, or Lakewood, really, and, uh, Middletown.
Okay. Do you have any further testimony from?
I, I do have a little bit more, and I don't wanna, uh, belabor too much, but I do wanna get a couple of things, uh, in, uh, for the board's consideration. Particularly some things that came up in the review letters. Speaking of the Route Nine frontage, I mentioned we filed for a letter of no interest. Uh, because we are not changing the operations of the site from car wash and loop bag, we expect the DOT would, uh, grant that. We're waiting for their response. In addition to that, uh, it was requested, uh, by your engineer, uh, there is a section of our frontage that does not have curb. Uh, we would add curb to that. We would also check, uh, the sidewalk, uh, at the, at the driveway to make sure that its ADA crossing is appropriate. So, that'll be another part of a, more of a highway occupancy permit to the DOT than our typical, than a typical access permit. Uh, but we will, uh, file that, uh, with a favorable approval. Speaking of pedestrians, we also provided an access in, uh, from Locust that can get you into the site. We will put an ADA ramp here to make sure that, uh, that is accessible there. I did wanna touch on, uh, one of the cruxes of this application, as Laura's mentioned, was to add the second lane here, uh, for the members-only lane. Again, this is an existing building, the car wash entrance is where it is. To make sure that we have the turn radius to get the vehicles in, and to get the second lane, we are pushing, uh, east a little bit, uh, with the drive. Uh, that means that we are, uh, requesting to realign, uh, the fire access that runs across the east property line. Push that a little bit further to the east. Uh, we, going back, uh, probably at least a year, uh, met with, uh, the Fire Marshal, uh, Mr. Prochnow, uh, to talk about that and to present that. Uh, he provided us some comments and concept. We incorporated some of those comments into the plan. We have a nineteen-foot wide driveway here. We recognize that fire code requests twenty feet. Because of, uh, the dimensionality of the access lane, uh, nineteen feet was the most that we could provide, and still have room to grade and provide a fence along the east property line. Uh, but with that nineteen feet, we are providing, uh, a, a curved island here with bollards to prevent, uh, vehicles from, uh, crossing that lane, either coming into or leaving, uh, the car wash site into that access lane. We're also doing some regrading. If anybody's ever driven that, as you come in off of Locust, a little bit of a dip down to get into the site before it levels off, uh, we're gonna regrade that a little bit, make that a little bit smoother, uh, to help out the emergency vehicles, uh, as they're exiting, uh, and entering the site. We do neck down at the north end, uh, just because of how it meets up, uh, with the adjacent drive to the north. But as you can see, as you're north of the property and the area behind, much of this lane is along, uh, that east property line. So, we're really lining things up a little bit better as well, uh, and allowing for that. So, uh, in his October thirtieth, twenty twenty-five review, uh, provided some comments, uh, for additional striping and some other things. We're agreeable to all those comments, uh, to improve that area.
So, um, the realignment of this easement, they do, I think they'll provide testimony at some point, but they do need a, a, a variance from the buffer requirements, the way they're realigning it. Obviously, that's not something, uh, we, we typically grant, and we, uh, take issue with. Um, we're also concerned about, um, the realignment of the easement, um, and how it is kind of tapering down, uh, because it does provide access not only to, um, the fire department building, but also to this building.
So, to, and to clarify, so the, the driveway that's there now has about plus or minus a ten-foot setback from the existing easterly property line. And it's within a thirty-foot wide access easement, um, which I believe is to Southern Fired Company. They're proposing to shift the driveway, you know, closer towards that easterly property line, remove vegetation, put in a, you know, a thirty-inch-high, plus or minus retaining wall. So, they do need relief of the buffer. The Fire Bureau, I think, reviewed this as part of the application, uh, and provided some comments with, how they saw the access. But ultimately, uh, they're not the easement holder. I think the easement holder would also have to sign off on this, because they're putting their member-only driveway within the last ten foot of that easement. So, um, you know, obviously, it's not there now. They're proposing to relocate and re-modify the site, or modify the site, creating that issue. We're gonna need to hear the need for that, and the planning justification for that.
And, and maybe if we pull up A-18, that is a, a little bit-
Before you move away-
It happens to be taken in the winter, so it's a little bit cleaner version of the existing conditions.
Before you move away from-
At Google.
Alright, that's fine.
You wanna see it, just cover up?
So, yeah, where is, where is your main concern, Charlie? Is it closer to Locust, or is it more down here where the, closer to Locust where, or the entire length?
The, in the entire length. So, right now, it's, it's twenty-foot wide, uh, but it's plus or minus setback ten feet from that easterly property line. And there is residential uses along the east property line, so they are shifting the whole driveway closer towards that property line. You know, I think we had a comment in a letter regarding if the board is inclined to, you know, grant an approval based off of the layout that they're saying, that, uh, that retaining wall's gonna have to have a fence on it. Uh, we would prefer something solid, you know, so that way it provides some screening and separation to the residential use along the east side of that. You know, and when we get to public, I, I would think that maybe that resident has some questions or concerns for the applicant also as well. But, I just wanna, you know, they're creating this with the application. It's not something that's necessarily an issue in the existing case. They're shifting this closer to the property line, so they're gonna have to justify their relief from it. I know the Fire Bureau issued a memo saying that they didn't have an issue from a fire perspective, uh, you know, access getting in and out of there. But ultimately, the Fire Bureau is not the easement holder, the Fire Company is the easement holder. They're also gonna need to sign off against it, and they're gonna need to justify that, like, the site is suited and can function without detriment to the public and, and fire access and safety. So, just wanna lay that out there now.
Are the trees coming out? Those trees that we're looking at?
I mean, I'll let the applicant's engineer testify. They are proposing like, uh, I wanna say, a thirty-inch-high block wall along that east side of the driveway. So, I don't know how many of those trees are gonna be compromised or be able to remain.
Hold on, I'll ask, are the trees coming out?
So, the, the, the trees are off the property, so the intention is that the trees, uh, would not come out. And I think, um, Mr. Collins raising some, some good comments that we're gonna get into, um, as far as the, the easement and things. There's a little bit of a chicken or the egg. We need to have site plan approval, and we need to have an easement amended, which I believe would be-
So, the easement runs, uh, to the township of Howell, uh, and it actually addresses, uh, that, uh, it's, uh, in favor of the fire department of the township of Howell to have emergency access, whose an easement was actually conditioned by this board, uh, some time ago when the car wash was originally approved. So, we've had conversations, uh, as, and Mr. Fruit can testify this more intently, but with the fire department over the course of almost about a year, uh, about this particular topic, make sure we have their support. And the chicken and the egg, I think that Mr. Fruit is referencing is, obviously, we wanted to come and, and, uh, ensure that this board, uh, would approve the application, and I presume it would be with a condition that, uh, that the township, uh, council would have to actually be the one to approve the easement amendment. And they're, they are aware of that issue, uh, but, uh, but obviously, that's a separate process. Who is Tom? Who is the "they" or who is "they"? Oh, well, I'm sorry, I spoke with Matt, uh, with Matt Howard, the Director of Planning. Well, he's, he's not here anymore? Yeah. He no longer works for the township? Oh, really? Yes. Oh. So, that's why I was asking? I didn't know who you were referring to when you said "they". Yeah. Okay.
So, and, and we mentioned Southern Fire. They were at the last meeting that we had, uh, with, uh, Mr. Prochnow, and several representatives from Southern Fired. So, they are aware of what we're doing to the access from a fire access standpoint. I don't wanna speak for them. They have a, a, a letter here, uh, but it was my, uh, my understanding that what we're proposing does create, uh, there are a lot of improvements, uh, to what we're doing. And if we can maybe go back to A-18, again, it, it does neck down. We're lining as best we can with what happens north. If anything were to happen on the north property line, they could, uh, continue the realignment. On our site plan, we do show some tapering just for safety, so that, um, the curb lines match up. But we would agree to have modified, allow modified curving and, uh, pavement on our property if anything were to happen to the north that would further improve that. Uh, but our goal here is to put that, uh, in best alignment with that, improve the gradient at the entrance. And understanding that that easement would have to be, uh, modified, uh, to be narrowed with the, the shifting of the, of the actual access point, uh, to mirror that. Again, it does, uh, will have, uh, a small wall, uh, for grading along the property line. Again, that lot fifty-eight, the first twenty-five feet is a homeowners' association property along this area. We do propose a six-foot-high fence on top of the wall, provide screening, understanding that we are, uh, coming a little bit closer, we wanna help mitigate as best as possible. Uh, so we're providing a six-foot-high, uh, fence on top of that wall. Uh, it's noted in the review letters. We are requesting relief, uh, so that fence can be above four feet high in the, in the front yard towards Locust Avenue. Uh, but as shown on our plans, uh, that fence does not encroach into the site triangle or sightlines, uh, of Locust Avenue. So, for safety perspective, we don't feel that there's any negative impacts from having, uh, a front yard fence there. It is a little bit unique being on a, on a corner property.
So, the easement is certainly one issue, but they currently, um, have that ten-foot residential buffer, and their realignment, uh, completely removes it. I think as, you know, Charlie indicated, it's, it's there today. This is a condition they're creating, and it seems they're only creating it to have that additional members-only lane. So, there is a buffer existing today, and, uh, they're proposing to remove that.
And certainly our plan, I'll get into a little bit more detail in the proofs of that variance, but from a site planning standpoint, we are working with an existing building. We're working with the existing structure. Our goal here is to put new technology and new services into this existing building, and make site circulation improved. And we're weighing what happens with the entrance at Route Nine, and making sure that site circulation is safe, that cars are moving through efficiently, uh, and adding the extra lane for additional stacking and queuing. We do understand and respect that we are encroaching into that ten-foot buffer, but with the existing building, it is a little bit of a balance here. Ultimately, it's the board's decision, uh, which is appropriate, uh, but I, we, as, we do have a planner here that'll, that'll help weigh that, uh, balance for you.
Mr. Frank, the, um, the concrete wall that's gonna be on the east side there, along that buffer, how high was that gonna be? Thirty-six inches?
Uh, it's just a couple of feet. I think it's less than three feet at its highest.
Okay, and did you say you're gonna put a six-foot fence on top of that?
Correct.
So, we're talking about eight or nine feet total?
Uh, visible from our side, yes.
Okay, is that-
So, we're the, we're the low side. So, from the residential property side, you would only see the six-foot fence.
Okay, I'm, I'm only bringing it up because I thought that we had some kind of limitation on fence height.
Yeah, and usually we count when there's a, a fence and a wall, we count them cumulative, so it would be, you know, nine feet. So, they would need technical relief if the board's inclined for the driveway where it is, for that fence to be carried to the, the Locust Ave front property line. You know, um, I think they would need to show us a site triangle to show that there's no issue from a site triangle perspective with the fence, if we are gonna allow it within the front yard area. So, that's the emergency access driveway to make sure that, you know, someone coming out of there is not gonna get T-boned by someone on Locust Avenue. Um, so if the board is inclined to act favorably, we'd wanna see that on the site plan, make sure it's not an issue. Um, the fence you're proposing is board-on-board, so, to me, I mean, I think white vinyl would look a lot nicer and, uh, more aesthetic than a board-on-board. Certainly, it's better than galvanized chink link, but I would be a proponent for white vinyl. Is that something the applicant would be amenable to?
Yes.
Okay. So, and then another technical comment, it didn't come up in the Fire Bureau's review memo, but, uh, I did have a conversation with them, and I think we, we had that concern too. Right now, I think some of that access drive drains onto the, uh, applicant's site, and they're proposing to put like a curb the whole way through there. And, um, by putting a curb, it creates a dam and creates a water issue, so they're putting a curb cut in. The fire official had a concern regarding that curb cut being utilized as like an informal ingress egress from the, the car washed, uh, you know, out of the site. So, we wanna see a full-height curb there, and if it requires another inlet to tie into the drainage on the site, or some other means of drainage or collection, that's something that we would be required, uh, requiring. We're, the Fire Bureau and, and the town is not in favor of like a mountable curb there, because then that's, it's like pissing in the wind. They're just gonna drive right over that thing, so, uh, we wanna see a full-height curb, and we wanna, we wanna see, uh-
I feel like there's another way to say that.
Pardon my vernac, pardon my vernacular, but, uh, but, but we wanna, we wanna see something to collect the drainage there, and we don't wanna have like an informal driveway, uh, coming in and out of there, so.
Yes.
So, we're happy to work with engineering and fire on that. When we met on-site, uh, with fire, the specific design that was agreed upon is what's on the plan, which is mountable curb with, uh, bollards spaced so the cars can't get through. The, the curb cut that's provided for drainage is no more than a couple of feet. It's certainly not enough for a car to get through. Uh, if we were to put it in it there, I don't have an objection. It just happens that there's no stormwater infrastructure on that side of the property, so it would be a long pipe run, but I don't, I don't, you know, if that's a, a critical factor, I think we could provide that. The, the reason we opted against full-height curb is it's only about eighteen inches, so if you do a full-height curb there, it, it kinda creates a situation. Typically, when you have full-height curb, you wanna have full grade at the high side of the curb, so you don't have a car kinda getting stuck rolling over the curb. So, that's why we didn't do a, a narrow band of full-height curb there, uh, on both sides, with pavement on both sides on the low side. We prefer to have the mountable curb with bollards in that area to keep cars from preventing, uh, passing through. I'm happy to speak with, with fire on that. I thought that was our understanding coming out of the meeting, and it didn't come up in his review letter. But maybe the three of us can get together and, and come up with a solution. You know, from an engineering standpoint, I think that that could be resolved without, um, you know, detriment to the site plan that the planning board would, would consider.
I would say if the board's inclined to act favorably, yeah, we can have a meeting of the minds. I think we want something more permanent than a mountable curb with, like, the plastic flexible delineators, can, anyone can drive over those things, you know what I mean? So, we don't want it to be a free-for-all. I, I get, it is tight there, so I get them wanting to have, you know, something where if someone hits it, it's not gonna damage their car, but we also don't want people just, I've seen them on some public right-of-ways, and, uh, you know, someone drives down them and they're not there any longer. So, we want something hard and permanent where we're gonna be satisfied that it's not gonna be, you know, just, uh, cutting in and out kinda deal. So, but we can, we can work that as a condition of the approval.
Everybody's good with that? Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, if we go back to A-19, I just, I, I don't wanna belabor my testimony, but again, a couple of the things that have come up in the review letters, uh, just to get, uh, in front of the board. There is a trash enclosure on the northeast corner of the property. That's where it is today. Uh, we're gonna rebuild that, uh, with block. I think there was a comment to make it split-face block. We have no objection to that. Uh, circulation for the trash would be during all peak hours, so it can circulate, uh, oh, I just lost my, no, there it is, no, I lost my. Circulate with the, uh, turning patterns of the drive-through. There was an observation that our, our overhead clearance bar, uh, would be a conflict with, uh, trash trucks and with delivery vehicles. Uh, it's also a comment as far as the signage, uh, impact of that. Thank you. I lost my-
We generally ask, is there, like, is there anything in the engineer's review letter the applicant won't agree to, or? I mean, if there is, braze it. If not, you could just say you'll agree to everything in the engineer's letter.
I think that's what I'm going through now, yes.
We don't, I'm saying, we- We don't, I'm saying, we don't need to, is there? Okay.
Yeah, so...
Well, I...
We're trying to just finish it up, is the point, your testimony? So if there's anything in the engineer's letter you disagree with, then I guess let the board know. If not, you could just say you're in agreement, that you'll take care of whatever the engineer asks for.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, and I'll hit on the highlights to speed up. So there's an existing CMP site, pipe on the site. You guys will televise that just to make sure it's in good condition so we don't, we're not putting good on top of bad.
We will, yes.
Right? And then you'll agree with any technical drainage comments regarding the recharge system and everything like that on the site?
Yeah, there was a comment about the existing storm drain on site, other than TVing it to make sure that it's functional the way it's designed today. It sits a little bit lower than the outlet structure and provides recharge. That is the way it is today. What we're providing is supplemental stormwater management, which, again, not to belabor the testimony, but we're providing supplemental stormwater to mitigate the impervious coverage that we're providing. So we're really adding to what's there today. We did not intend to rebuild or reconstruct what's there unless it was shown to be in disrepair.
Yeah, I mean, I would be in the applicant's best interest to just make sure that they're adding to a system that's in good condition, so I I think it would be prudent. You talked about the garage and then also garbage truck and then emergency vehicles. So that's, that overhead's going to be raised so that way there's free clearance coming in and out of there?
I think hearing that comment and hearing some of the comments about signs, we're just going to take that out.
Take that sign out? Okay, all right. And then those operations would occur off-peak from the peak of the, okay.
Correct.
We talked about no EV being required. We had a comment regarding like the site driveway. I think the garbage truck coming in and out of the site had to go in, sweeping out into that, that second lane of Route 9. Is there any way, was that just a sloppy circulation?
Yeah, I took a look. That is a mountable island at Route 9. We're maybe a little bit carefree with circulation. We've already looked at it, the truck, and we'll submit it with revised plans, but that vehicles can come out and stay out of that next lane.
Okay, all right. And then you're going to get a letter of no interest from DOT. Sight lighting, everything's going to be downward-facing, houseside shields, 3,000 Kelvin maximum because we got residential nearby. You're going to agree to agree, address any technical comments in the LTE's review letter? They issued one? They should have issued one.
Haven't seen one, so it's hard to agree to it, but we'll...
Okay. I mean, that's typically something that this board requires. It's usually substitution on plantings and things like that. Would you have an issue addressing those as residential compliance?
Again, I don't expect it, but it's hard to say, had not seen the letter.
Okay. And then we had raised a concern regarding, like, there's mapped wetlands on GeoWeb. You did provide a supplemental environmental report by DeBois. Can you just give us like a very paraphrased version of what that, the findings were?
Certainly. So northeast of the property on that homeowners' association lot, it's about, it's over 100 feet, maybe 125 feet. There's a narrow ditch on that property that is, again, over 125 feet from our property. That would be, and I guess to cycle back a minute, DEP's GIS mapped some some wetlands on or adjacent to this on that property. We sent a, we had an environmental scientist go out there and walk it to make sure that there are no wetlands. The only thing that they found was a narrow ditch over 100 feet northeast of the property. Any buffer associated with that would not extend out of the property. Hopefully that's sufficient for...
Yeah, so they said that there was, it might be wetlands, there's a 50-foot buffer based on theirs, but it's not even close to the property.
Right.
They did say that investigation of the flood hazard area may be warranted, but can you provide testimony? So the area to your easterly property line, like we said, the driveway is 10-foot off the property line, but there is maintained grass on the property line there, right? So it is a previously disturbed area to some extent, right?
Where we're wa- moving the driveway?
Yeah.
It is, yes.
Okay. All right. I think that's all I have for the engineer, Mr. Chairman.
Charlie, just real quick. With the removal of a lot of the green spaces from the existing to what they're proposing here, the sewer syst-, the stormwater drainage system upgrades were more than sufficient to handle the additional runoff from the pervious substances?
Yeah, and I'll let their site engineer provide some additional testimony, but there is, the system that's on the property is like unique and it looks like it doesn't necessarily have a direct discharge to Route 9. I think it was like, it might overflow into the Route 9 right away.
There's a, there's a 15-inch overflow pipe into Route 9, yeah.
Yeah, so they have like a 36-inch CMP on the site, and then the discharge to Route 9 is actually like higher than the invert of that. So the system that's there is providing some stormwater collection and attenuation before it discharges to Route 9. They factored that into their existing calculations, so it's not like they're saying we've got all this additional flow going out in the precondition and we can then just send all this additional flow going out. So, so that's why they're proposing 36-inch recharge pipe in addition to what's there. So even though this isn't a major development, they did provide stormwater calculations and we had some technical, technical comments in our letter regarding the sizing of that, which I think they've agreed to to address. But a lot of those requirements are, because they are disturbing more than 5,000 square feet, they got to go to soils and they got to meet the soil restrictions on like no increase to the two and the 10-year flows. So it's not a major development, but they are providing stormwater management with 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 the application.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else from the board? Yes, John?
Just a couple of quick questions. Along the the vacuums, are there trash receptacles going to be there for anybody who's emptying out their car of any?
Yes, on every stand, there's a small trash receptacle that'll then be cleared up by staff.
And just curious, as far as the circulation pattern, at least for the oil changes, is there a reason why it goes counter to what the flow is for the car wash? It would seem that you would be able to stack more cars onto the property if you were going counterclockwise versus clockwise, no?
Yeah, so the the main reason there is, again, doing the the traffic study on that that was done by Dynamic Traffic and submitted a letter of no interest, there really isn't a lot of demand for that. So having four, four workstations inside and ability to stack four cars in front of that is more than enough. We did not need the stacking that was provided by the circulatous lane around the back. This provides a more efficient flow and provides increased room for use of the parking spaces.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, I, with your indulgence, I just wanted to have, this is a help our planner, just if you just quickly just talk about the directional signages in terms of the area and height and the pylon sign, which is, I think, the freestanding site, which in terms of the setback in area. And then just real quick, the average sight lighting?
Certainly. So with regard to the signs, the freestanding sign exists at the corner of Route 9 and Locust today. It's about 36 square feet, it's a little over 15 feet high. It is set back 5.7 feet from the rightaway, which is within the, which requires variance. An existing condition require variance to maintain that sign at that setback. But what we're going to do is really just reface that existing sign, something that it looks like in the picture there.
It's a stormwater.
So that's, again, to remain and be refaced. The directional signs, we talked about the car wash entrance sign, which is about 112 square feet, that's being removed. If, I'd rather, if I can, use the A19 to talk through some of this. So this sign, the overhead wash sign, about 112 square feet, that's being eliminated. There are two directional signs. They're about six square feet each. They're within the level of directional sign, one as you come in directing you to, to the south or to the right as you come in, and then directing you either into the lube bays or around to the car wash and vacuums. The other thing that Mr. Trautner mentioned was the lighting, just to help our planner talk about one of the variances that we're seeking, waiver, excuse me, that we're seeking with regard to the illumination levels. This ordinance, as I'm sure this board's familiar, this ordinance has a minimum of 0.3-foot candles, but a maximum average of 0.5-foot candles. That becomes, A, very hard to satisfy both at the same time, and B, from IES illuminating engineering society standards, it's usually a couple-foot candles is the average that's considered for a retail commercial tech uses for a parking lot. So what we look at from a design perspective is to have really a half a foot candle throughout the site. You're saying 0.3. We'd rather have about a half-foot candle throughout the site is the minimum, so we're pretty much hitting that, we're hitting the 0.3 throughout the site. But that brought our average up to 1.65-foot candles. From a design standpoint, that's still within what the IES looks at for a typical retail commercial site, but it does, requires to seek a waiver where it's a 0.5 maximum average. I just wanted to point that out for the board.
But you're saying they're not going to be, there's not going to be nighttime operation of the business?
The business won't operate at night, but for security purposes, just because of the Route 9 corridor, we would seek to have the lights on overnight.
Thank you. But nobody could go in there and notice the car wa-, I mean, the vacuums?
They're not open.
Yeah.
The the vacuums are shut down, the gates are shut on the car wash, right, correct.
And this is basically during daylight hours? Because you said you cut back the hours to five during the shorter...
That's right. It'll be dusk to dawn will be the lights. Again, 1.65 is a pretty low average. Again, it's all downward-focused LED fixtures, 3,000 Kelvin temperature, consistent with what, what this board's requesting throughout town.
I have no issue with the hours based on...
Not the hours, but really don't need the lights if it's under the...
Security lights on.
That's all I have.
That's all you have? And then Charlie, you're good with your comments. Christine, do you have anything to add?
Not for this witness.
Okay. Okay, before, we we are going to be taking a break. I just am curious if anybody here from the public would be making comments on this application. I just want to get a feedback, one. Okay. I think we'll do our break first and then we'll hear from our planner. So we're going to take five minutes break. Mr. Bell, so you know the circumstances right now. What do you want to do?
Um, well, when does the board stop hearing new applications as a general matter?
We usually have a cutoff at 10:00. So we can play it by ear and we can get some testimony in, but I just don't want to be cutting your, you know, your case off.
Yeah, so I am certainly not looking to extend anyone's night if we don't need to. My client did fly in from Tennessee, so if we are able to get through any portion of our application, I would like to try.
Okay, well...
So I guess perhaps we'll have to just see how the remainder of this application goes and then we'll...
Yeah, okay. Well, we'll certainly take that in consideration because if we we can get him at least to testify, you know, we'll certainly do that. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. I see a familiar face.
Yes, good evening, Chairman.
And I want to hear all your credentials.
I know you want to just hear that my license is current and valid, which it is.
Okay, let's move on. We accept it.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. So good evening for the record, Christine Caphone, testifying as a licensed professional planner. You heard a lot of testimony from our site civil engineer as well as the applicant and operator. So you know that this is an existing undersized lot in your HD1, right? The HD1 is one of our more permissive commercial districts in Havel Township, and it requires a minimum lot area of 80,000 square feet, where the subject lot is 42,240 square feet. Beyond that, there's an existing building on the square, on the site that's just under 5,000 square feet. The applicant is proposing to repurpose that building. There is an existing automobile service station as well as a car wash on the property today. So those uses are both conditionally permitted in the HD1 zone. The violation of those conditions that we don't meet are existing conditions, right? We are violating the fact that we need to be a certain distance from another auto repair facility and from municipal facilities. Both of those conditions exist on the property today. It is not something the applicant is looking or asking the board to approve because it's an existing condition. We are 300 feet from the Mavis Tire, where we are required to be 2,500 feet from another service station, and we are within 1,000 feet of Town Hall. So those are the existing conditional, our use requirements that we violate. So what that means is the burden of proof for the D variant is a little different than if you're asking the board to introduce a use into the zone that's outright permitted, right? If we were asking you to contemplate a use that's not permitted in the zone at all, we would have to demonstrate things to you like the particular suitability, as well as the Medici reconciliation of the omission of that use from the zone plan. Instead, when you're dealing with a D2 use and a D3 unmet conditional use, we're guided by the Burbage case. When the Burbage case was a case for an auto body, it was an expansion of a non-conforming use. And what essentially the case law for an expansion of a non-conforming use and unmet conditional use is that absent compliance with those conditional use standards, is the site still in appropriate location for the use? That's for the conditional use. When you're dealing with the D2 expansion of a non-conforming use, Burbage asks you to be concerned and focus on the betterments of the application and the holistic upgrades to the site, not just mere beautification. In fact, mere beautification alone is not enough to substantiate your burden of proof with regard to an expansion of a non-conforming use application under Burbage. There has to be some other benefits. Here, the applicant is improving the site circulation. They are modernizing the new equipment. They are adding a handicap space and they are introducing and improving the stormwater management systems on the subject property. So I think that those betterments are substantial. The reason we have to focus on things like betterments is because we do need some relief here, right? We know, and there's already been discussion with your planner and your engineer, that in order for us to have that middle drive-through lane for our dedicated customers, our, our membership customers, that we need to come closer to our eastern property line, which is the the property line to the rear. There is already disturbance in that area. So this really becomes a balancing act, right? If you had the opportunity, as many as I'm sure of you do, to drive past the site on a regular basis, you know to say that the site currently lacks curb appeal and focus is to put it kindly because the site really could, is in need of an upgrade. So I think that this is absolutely one of those situations where you have to look at the holistic nature of the application. And the case law tells us to do that, right? Not to just cherry pick out the variances and look at, how do you balance? Because that's what we need to do. We need to balance the benefits versus the detriments. And when you're evaluating the negative criteria, the negative criteria has two prongs to it, and the municipal land use law is very clear. It does not ask you to hold this or any other applicant to a standard that there be no detriment. That is not the standard of proof for the grant of the negative criteria prong of a variance. It's to ensure that the benefits of the grant of the variance would outweigh any detriment. I heard Mr. Kumlif, your engineer, ask if we would be willing to do a white vinyl fence on top of our wall and that, and I think that that's a nice suggestion, right? That's a transition, this is a transitional site. We've got the very high-intensive corridor of Route 9, and then we have a 25-foot home HOA strip, and then we have residential housing. So I am absolutely in support of the application to put a vinyl fence there. I think it would be a great condition of approval. Also, when you're balancing and you look at your master plan reexamination report, which was last evaluated here in 2023, there's a specific statement in that master plan that reads about evaluating the potential for economic and rehabilitation in strategic locations within the township where appropriate to encourage sound land use development that can provide economic development opportunities while at the same time balancing the preservation of neighborhood character as well as the protection of environmental resources. And boy, if this application doesn't hit all of those, hit that goal on all cylinders. In my opinion, as a planner, I think it certainly does. So I think the board can certainly and unequivocally grant the relief that's requested in conjunction with this application. We meet our statutory burden of proof, in my opinion, for both the D2 variants for the expansion of a non-conforming use as well as the D3 variants for the unmet conditional use. And I think when, again, when you're dealing with Burbage, one of the other hallmarks of the Burbage case is that when you're dealing with the negative criteria, it encourages you on an expansion of a non-conforming use to view the non-conforming use with greater liberality than you would if you were introducing the use. And that's because the neighborhood is accustomed to the use already, as is in this case, as in the subject application. So I think when you look at all those things and you look at the betterments, and I'm not going to repeat them again because I know we have an out-of-state visitor who wants to get on the record tonight, so I will not go through them again because I think Mr. Fur did a great job of outlining them and I outline them again. So I believe we do meet the statutory burden of proof for the D2 and the D3. And I think as far as the negative criteria, the impact on the public good and the impact on the zone plan doesn't rise to a level of substantial detriment. And when I review the reexamination report here, I find that there are certain... And when I review the reexamination report here, I find that there are certain goals and objectives in that master plan that would be advanced by the grant of this application in total and I, I don't see any substantial detriment. As far as the other relief and the sign plan, your ordinance is very clear at section 256-5, which regulates signs, that when you have a business situated on a corner lot, it does allow for two, two types of the signs that are permissible. So it certainly recognizes that that's a situation where additional signs would be appropriate. The other thing I should tell you is that what we do have on the western-facing elevation which faces Route 9, we have several signs there, a car wash sign, an express auto spa sign, and an oil change sign. That amounts to about 11% of the total facade area on the west where your ordinance would allow 25%. On our southern-facing facade, which is our side facade facing Locust, we have the express auto spa sign and that goes to about 7% of that wall area. And that's important because when you're looking at signs, right, we want our signs to be advertising. We don't want vacant spaces. We want them to have several functions. We want them to be attractive, we want them to be aesthetic, and we want them to be well-positioned to the, the walls that they're sitting on and we want them to be wavefinding. So I think that the sign plan does all of those things and I think the board can certainly grant the relief with respect to the sign plan with no substantial detriment. And again, the bulk variance for the area is an existing condition. We do need an impervious coverage variance as well at 83.5 feet where 70% is allowed in the zone. And I think Mr. Freud did a great job of telling you that we will have no adverse impacts with respect to the stormwater management and the site can certainly accommodate any of the, the excess coverage. And really, I, I know that your planner is going to have, have feel some kind of way about that buffer variance in the back. And I think that the combination of the vinyl fencing that we are proposing will certainly mitigate the impacts of the buffer relief. And when you look at the overall benefits of the application, I'm hopeful that you also come to the conclusion that will be no substantial detriment resulting from any of the variance relief associated with this application.
And Christine, I assume your testimony would hold also with the, if I didn't hear it, accessory structure in front yard, minimum number of parking spaces, and I think fence height. And there were one or two design waivers as well.
Definitely with the fence height, that's a clear C2 because it gives us more screening. I should have touched on the, um, the, the turbine, right? I think we talked about that. The specifics, with the turbine, where we're showing it right now, it's in a front yard to Locust and we have a fence around it. What we suggested doing was moving it back even further or I believe Mr. Kumlif suggested moving it back toward, closer to the east, which would be closer towards the residence. So that's again, right, that's what we do as planners, you as the board, we as the applicants, planners, and your plan. We're always balancing what is the best way to do it. This is a highway commercial corridor and this site needs to be redeveloped. There is no question about that. I don't think anybody in this room would disagree with that. So as far as the, um, the turbine and the location of the, that, you know, that accessory, that's the accessory structure, that's what we're talking about. When we're talking about the accessory structure in the front yard, it's that turbine. So I think, um, I prefer it further from the residential neighborhood. I think we can screen it. I think we, we had a good idea to screen it. Personally, I think the vegetation would look better than the fence in that area. I like the higher fence along our eastern property. Um, I think that that will be better and more effective there. I think that the, the natural screening along Locust would be a preferable view shed for me, but that's, that's just my opinion on that variance. I think that that would certainly be, um, either way, whatever the board felt was more screening, of course, the applicant would do. I find the, the turbine along Locust to be a better location and that the natural vegetative screening would be a better alternative there. As far as the parking, I believe our parking count is 18 is required, 14 is what we're proposing. Um, you heard the applicant testify that we have approximately nine to 12 employees but that they don't all drive to the site at any one time. So, um, our parking is certainly adequate to meet our, our demand. So I see no substantial detriment to the, the grants of the parking variance and it certainly lends to a more efficient layout.
And then, I don't, just briefly, the design waivers, there was a minimum circulation, lighting average, and sidewalks.
So, um, I believe your planner would probably want the sidewalks if, if we, I'm not even going to, I'm not even going to try to justify it because I know that it's just Jennifer would never accept it. So I'm not even going to bother because I know what to know. So I.
I think they're there already. We just need to make sure they're handicapped.
Okay, well, we're going to have to comply with that. We're going to have to do, do our level best.
So everybody adding curb space and then ADA compliance to the sidewalk where it cuts the, the traffic.
Yeah, I think we're going to have to comply with that. I don't see, I don't see us successfully arguing to not comply with that. And as far as the lighting, I think, uh, Mr. Freud testified to that as well, that the lighting is certainly appropriate and the appropriate illumination levels, again, knowing that the latest this is open is six o'clock, right? So I think that we are open primarily during daytime hours from eight to six or eight to five, depending on what time of calendar year we're in. So I think the illumination levels are not something that are going to be onerous to the, to the neighborhood.
Did you say minimum circulation aisles?
The minimum circulation aisles, we're, of course, improving the circulation and I think, again, this is an undersized lot, right? It's 42,240 square feet where you have an 80,000 square foot requirement and it's an existing condition, existing site. So we are trying to improve the circulation and flow through this existing undersized developed lot. And I think that the circulation has been demonstrated by our engineer to provide for sufficient and extensive vehicle stacking and that the circulation aisles are sufficient to accomplish that goal.
No further questions, Chairman.
Okay, Christine.
Yes, so, um, the applicant is seeking a D2 variance for the expansion of the nonconforming use. I think that perhaps, um, what they're proposing is a little too intense for the site while there had been, you know, and there is an existing required residential buffer there with the easement realignment, they're proposing to, you know, basically that buffer will no longer exist, but for the fence they're, um, proposing, I think that's an issue. You know, we generally, um, do not grant variances for buffer relief. And, uh, you know, this is right next to a residential property, um, HOA property. I think, um, some of the other variances they need also kind of speak to the intensity of the use. They are not meeting their parking requirement and, um, the board, as did I, had some questions about how the circulation would work with some of those, um, vacuum spaces and the, um, the one queuing lane. I appreciate they will comply with the sidewalk requirements, but, um, my concerns, um, most, my most important concerns, I guess, are really the buffer, that easement realignment and how that impacts not only the fire station but also this municipal building and then just the general layout of the site.
Mr. Chair, and I apologize if I missed it. So, um, so, so you have the two lanes that come through, all the way through on the east side of the property, which is causing the issue with the encroachment into the access easement and having to shift everything. Could those be two lanes and then have some system where they converge into one lane and serve the same purpose? Can you provide some planning testimony on, uh, why it, why it's being proposed the way it is? Is that, you know, does it, does the site circulate better because of that? Um, you know, is that the only way that this can be done to, for this site to operate the way that the applicant's proposing to operate?
Yes, I asked my client that at the break. I asked if there, we could implement a system like that and he indicated to me that that would not work, it would not allow for the vehicles to move through the site so efficiently and the, the project would not go forward if that was the configuration of the, the circulation.
And then the last comment that I'll have is, and I, I think you heard the applicant's testimony, applicant's attorney provide testimony on it. The easement is to Howell Township and it serves the benefit of the Southern Fire Department. So if the board were inclined to act favorably, they would still have to get Howell Township, the governing body, to sign off on the improvements to be within the easement and the modifications to the easement. So, um, if the board weren't inclined to act favorably and the governing body decided that they weren't of the same opinion and didn't see the driveway was fit to be within easement and denied that, they would have to come back to the board to, uh, seek amendment to the site plan. So I just want to put that on the record for the board's awareness.
We would, of course, accept that as a condition of approval and we so acknowledge that. We would absolutely have to come back if the governing body did not get, grant that relief.
Any questions from the board before we go to public?
Yeah, so we could consider that then to be like kind of a legal thing that's going to be wiped out if we said yes and then if, yeah.
Yeah, I think Andy would tell you that there's case law that says you can't deny an application solely for not having an easement or a modification to an easement, but you can make it a condition of a, of a board approval.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
I agree.
Okay, thanks, Andy. Okay, I think, I don't have any further questions for the planner. Do you want to make a motion to go to public?
Make a motion to go to public, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Hughes, Mr. Cantor, second, on favor.
Uh, yes. Thank you.
We're now open to the public for any public comment.
I'm Stephen Huff Schmidt, I live at 11 Locust.
You got to be sworn in, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, do you swear that the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
State your name for the record, spell your last, and give your address.
Stephen Huff Schmidt, H U F S C H M I D T, and I live at 11 Locust Avenue.
Where exactly is that so we can get a perspective?
The property that borders the fire road.
Okay.
That they were talking about.
Okay.
Um, the one question I got, uh, they keep talking about new technology and all this other stuff. How loud is this new technology? The new air blowers or whatever, the air dryers, whatever, at the car wash? I get the turbine, uh, decibel, I heard the man say that, which is 30 decibels, that's fine. But what about the big air blowers in the car wash itself? How loud is that?
I think we need the applicant to give us, answer your question because that is a good question.
By the air blowers, you mean the dryers inside the tunnel? So that is at the exit of the tunnel? So that's on the opposite end of, it's towards Route 9, not where, not where you are. So.
Right, so you're not like all through the.
No, that's the last piece of equipment in the tunnel.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, the, the, the blowers, the dryers are at the exit of the tunnel, which is on Route 9. That's contained within the structure and so it's not that noisy, but regardless, it's on the opposite side of, of where you live.
Okay, I got you. The other comment I had is about the, the turbine issue. I, I think where it is should be where it stays. Don't move any closer to my property. I mean, I, I got enough issues with this fire road because the township came down, they tore out the old fence, they chewed up all the trees and everything. I mean, they made, it really made a mess is what they did. So I'm glad to hear they want to put a, a fence up and, and whatever. But my question is, how far toward my property are you talking about pushing the, the fire road? Like how much closer to my property is it going to get pushed?
Was it? What, what was it, Charlie? What was, how much?
Sorry, what was the question? I apologize.
How much, close, towards the.
The property line.
I think it might be six feet. We can have somebody testify, but.
Yeah, their engineer can come up and get testimony on, also scale on the plans and give you confirmation of that.
So, uh, again, Robert Prude, uh, right now, it's about nine feet off. It'll be about, uh, three or four feet, three feet or so afterwards. So it's moving about six feet closer with getting the fence.
Okay, now, I may be completely wrong with this, but when I spoke with the lady from the HOA, I don't remember her name or whatever, when they tore down the old fence or whatever, she told me that strip of land that, that runs between the fire road and my property is, uh, part of the wetlands or whatever and is basically managed by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. So you're talking about moving another three feet, that's, now you're encroaching in on wetland, basically property. And what I've seen on the EPA's website, it, it does show a boundary along my property and that access road that says that's wetlands property. Now how much that actually is, I, I'm, I don't know, I'm not an engineer, I couldn't tell. But I, all I can say is it does show there's a, a boundary in there, a part of wetlands. So I don't know, maybe you guys want to double check that? I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, Charlie, is that something that we, the DEP has to approve? So that's part of condition?
So their, their engineer did provide a report from, um, the Boys Environmental, who's an environmental consultant that has been before this board on a number of occasions. I think the, the lot that, that he's talking about, um, there's a 25-foot strip between the subject property and his property. That's part of a larger property that's an open space conservation property, probably to some extent, um, that was created when that subdivision was created. Further northeast of the subject property, there is a drainage ditch that, uh, you know, runs, uh, behind the Southern Fire and I think towards the direction of the municipal building and it might tie into some drainage with the, um, choke handle there. But they, their environmental professional, that 25-foot strip that's immediately behind this property, they, in their recommendation and their assessment, there wasn't any of the three prongs that would, um, exhibit the characteristics of wetlands. You need all three of those for it to be considered as a wetlands. Uh, that drainage ditch, they did say that that was potentially wetlands and would have a 50-foot buffer, but that was some distance, I would think at least 125 feet, I think, from the closest property line. Um, so, uh, you know, I don't necessarily have a concern. If this board were inclined to require the applicant to go get a presence-absence LOI or something like that, you certainly, it's within your right to do so. I do know it would be a very, probably one to two-year process for them to maybe go get something like that. Um, it's purely at your discretion, but, um, you know, I think based off of what DeBaz has presented, I'm, I'm not very concerned with that being a wetlands area.
Just out of curiosity, is that Windmill Club HOA property or another one? Does anybody know that?
It's HOA, it's. The HOA that my mother-in-law's here, they, they've been a part of it since they first moved here in 83, 84.
Oh, so that's where the house is, okay.
Right, right. And she lives what is there now.
Okay.
The wooded area behind my house, this, this strip that runs along the side of the property, um, I, I don't know if it actually belongs at HOA or not. I know they manage it, like, watch out for it, whatever. But who legally belongs, I have no idea. But like I said, I'm glad, I, you know, they want to put a, a fence up and all this stuff, so if that's fine, uh, I would like to get it on the record. If I could get it in writing, that'd be even better.
It will be, it will, it will be in the resolution, so it will be in writing.
Okay, so.
Because we want.
Soon as ahead, they put the fence up, whatever.
We're going to rewire it.
They're responsible for this fence. If it gets damaged, it gets knocked down, they're responsible for the fence.
Yes.
Because I, I don't know who the man was, I got into it with how, when they came down there, tore down the old fence or whatever. I don't want to have that issue with you.
Okay.
So, I mean, we had that tornado come through, blew a tree down on my house and that was a whole nother problem with, with getting that taken care of. But the fence will belong to them, they'll maintain it, whatever.
And the applicant will agree to that?
We agree.
Okay.
Okay. Um, oh, the security lights. I, I, the only comment I have about that is I, I would just ask them, when they install them and they, they set them, please set them to where they, where they need to go. Don't point them at my house because we had an issue with the last owner of that property with, with security lights at night. And that was a whole nother problem. They put in new lights and they had one right over the oil bay doors that pointed directly through my back door. And it was, it was irritated.
Okay.
I would say that if, if that happens again, come to the township because it's going to be in the resolution that it's not supposed to happen.
Right, I, you know, I'm just asking, you know, when they put them.
No, no, we're.
That, that area over there, we'll, we'll make sure that there are.
That is one big concern we have. So we, we hear, yeah.
If I, if I recall, testimony earlier said that the lighting would be downward facing, all, all lighting?
Yep, that's correct. Right, with house side shields.
Okay, okay, so that.
So, uh, I, I guess that's all I got, yeah.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you had some good questions. Thanks for coming up.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, just to chime in with that. So I agree with the representation from Mr. Freud with, uh, driveway is moving six foot closer to the property line, so I, I concur with that. And, uh, the lighting, point by point analysis that they did provide shows, I want to say, zero-foot candles along that whole easterly property line. So, uh, you know, based off of the lighting design, there should not be any spill over onto that easterly property line. Um, going back to the turbine area and at the. Going back to the turbine area, not to beat it into the ground, if we're going to leave it where it is, I would just ask that the fence around that be white solid vinyl fence to match what's being proposed along that eastern property line. So I know they're doing board-on-board, which does have some openings. The solid, I think, will also help with like potential noise.
Yes.
And then just, the blowers also, I just want to put it on the record, they already testified that those, the blowers for the car wash, that's already been done and improved. And that's not something that's under the purview of this board. That was something they could have went, any owner, and got like building permits to make that modification. So that's not something subject of this, our jurisdiction.
Okay.
How high is the auxiliary structure for the turbines?
I'll let the applicant provide testimony, how high it is.
There are parts of it that are about eight feet.
Okay, so it does need a fence, okay.
Well, we had suggested landscaping a little up.
Landscaping, okay, something.
I think in this location, if it's going to stay where it is, I think landscaping, as they shown on the plan, but a solid vinyl fence, because the frontage of Locust Avenue, there's no ability to really put like landscape plantings without it being in the public right of way. So I think the solid vinyl fence and landscaping they have proposed is, would be said.
Okay, so it is a fence.
Yeah, I testified that we would shift it three feet back to allow room, but I'll defer to you and the board's preferences.
I would prefer that if you could shift it back.
Yeah, I think shifting it, solid vinyl fence and landscaping would be fine. There's a drainage manhole there, which, you know, we don't want to have a structure on top of it.
I think that would be my preference, if you could do that.
We'll agree.
Okay. Okay, anything further before we have summary?
Close to public.
Yeah, we, yeah. Motion to close?
I'd make a motion to close the public.
Mr. Ryan? Second, Mr. Hughes, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I don't want to belabor, obviously, there's a, you know, a number of variances and design waivers, which the board has heard testimony in support of. And, you know, unfortunately, the, with the, you know, constraints on this being a pre-existing use and structure on the site, there were, you know, certain compromises which we attempted to address, which drive some of those variances and waivers. So with all that being said, without trying to belabor, I know there's a gentleman who would like to testify before flying back to Tennessee. I will respectfully close, and we hope the board would consider approving the application.
Okay, thank you. If there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, taking into account, you know, I think the turbine staying where it is, moving it three feet makes good sense, again, seeing the street view. I don't think moving it where we talked about earlier would make any sense. Putting up the vinyl fence and nice screening around it, that'd be wonderful with plantings. Figuring out the easement on the legal perspective, I'm going to leave that up to, you know, to that process. The white vinyl fence across the back and putting in, or making sure that the sidewalks are all appropriate and in good shape, I would like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Hughes, with the motion, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Orozco. Could we have a roll call?
Mr. Cantor?
Mr. Chairman, I do agree that the benefits of this property being modernized and updated far outweigh the debt, any potential detriments, particularly with removing, moving that driveway in the back. So I vote yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes, I'd like to say that you guys put a lot of thoughtful thought into this project and gone over everything pretty darn good. And I'm pretty satisfied with the job you've done and everything that you agreed to do as easily as you agreed to do it. So my vote is yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
I think that the resident that lives right next to the property is thankful for the improvements that are going to happen with the fence, so if he's happy, I'm happy. I vote yes.
Mr. Karavak, Kavarakas?
I feel like this application brings a significant improvement to the site, so therefore I vote yes as well.
And Chairman Martin?
I'm going to concur with all my fellow members, because everybody kind of nailed exactly what I was thinking, too. The positives outweigh the negatives, and you guys did a very good job. And I voted yes as well.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members.
Good job.
Okay, you too.
Three passes for those owners.
Thank you.
Can we come and say? Tennessee.
I'm fine if it's late. I'm running for hills.
Really? Okay, whatever you guys want. Oh, well, oh, yeah, okay. Sorry, I mean, you can-
Yeah, yeah, right.
Well, you're going to make the board happy.
Yeah.
That'll be a good news.
Yes, Mr. Bell?
All right. Mr. Chairman, board members, notwithstanding what I told you about 15 minutes ago, we have decided to adjourn our hearing until your next meeting. Don't want to hold anyone over time. And my applicant and my client, I would prefer to be here during the entirety of our presentation. So we'll, we will carry it until, pardon me, carry it until your next meeting date.
Well, we need a date to agree on.
So the next meeting, December 8th and December 22nd?
Yes. Rich, Mr. Chairman, on the 8th, yet we may have a large application. Panda Group is on.
Yeah, I think would be better for them to come the 22nd. That way we can put them first.
Yeah.
Take it. That works for us. Yes, that works for us.
The 22nd? Yeah, because this way we'll let you start off and you'll more likely finish. So again, I really apologize.
These things happen.
Yeah, it's sometimes we think a case is going to be a lot quicker than-
Certainly.
Okay.
Understood. Well, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
When is the, when is the-
Extension of time?
Yeah, let's see, I don't-
Doesn't have it on it.
Doesn't have it on here.
So we're okay on time? Maybe just read the announcement till no other notice will be required.
Okay, just to put it on record, case number BA 2203A, Hutton, Howell, NJ State LLC will be carried to December 22nd.
22nd.
22nd with no further notice. And I guess we'll see you then.
All right, thank you very much.
Good, thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Before you leave?
Yes.
Could you just let your client know that the site is absolutely atrocious? It's been tagged up with graffiti. The boards that were previously used to board up the place are now falling, and it just needs a quick cut. If they could just please address the property maintenance issues?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any further business at the board?
Just have a great Thanksgiving, everybody.
Yeah.
Eat lots of turds.
Yes. Yes, do not miss a minute.
Want you to do a jury?
Motion by Mr. Cantor, draw a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Okay, we adjourn. Happy Thanksgiving.
And-